There's still lots of seats inside here. I know you all want to sit on that side. It's like when you go to a wedding and, you know, the bride's family sits on one side. Then they take count, see who wins. Okay, it is time. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 5:30. Welcome this evening. It's wonderful to see you all out here this evening, and it is a momentous occasion, and we're looking very much forward to it. And this is a city council work meeting. It's November the 19th, 2025, and the appropriate hour is 5:30. It's being held at the city council chambers at 10 North Main Street. We're honored this evening, once again, to have Director Greg Powell with the Color Country Communication Council, a religious coordination group, to offer our invocation, after which Mr. Paul Bittman will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Director?
Mayor, just a quick thought before I offer some prayer.
Did I now say it wrong?
I'm going to give a 15-minute speech. Is that okay? It'll just be 15 minutes.
Since you have the pulpit.
Just, I wanted to express on behalf of the, as I'm the outgoing president of the Cedar Area Interfaith Alliance this year, on behalf of the Alliance, I want to thank you for this invitation this last year or so to have the interfaith group come and get these proceedings started every Wednesday evening. Thanks for your service. Please express our thanks to Ron as well. Thanks to your service to this community. We're blessed to have had you in that chair. And again, on behalf of the interfaith group, thank you so much for this invitation to come and get these meetings started every week. We really appreciate it. It's been great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our Father in Heaven, we're so grateful as we come before thee on this afternoon with these items on this agenda to consider and to discuss. We're thankful for this opportunity. We have to work one with another. We're grateful for the goodness of this community, for the citizens that are here, for the, as individuals continue to move here. We pray that they'll get the spirit of this community, the spirit of service and of cooperation, of working together for the good of all. We're grateful, Father, as we're going into the holidays and looking forward to 2026, we're thankful for, on a national, state, and local level, the opportunity to commemorate one of our national sacred documents, even the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. We're thankful for that sacred document, for that momentous, this momentous occasion that we're looking forward to. We pray that as we go into this next celebratory year, that patriotism and unity throughout the community and throughout our nation will increase. We pray that we'll all be able to look back with gratitude on the founding of this country and the remarkable place that it is. We pray that that would bless us in foreign and domestic affairs and in local affairs here in Cedar City. We again ask thee to bless all of our elected officials, all of the staff members that work here in this community, certainly our first responders, who are, put their lives on the line daily for us. We're grateful for them. Ask thee to be, to watch over them and bless them with safety and protection. Once again, Father, we express gratitude for this meeting, for the agenda items we'll work through. We pray that thou would bless those who will be debating these items this evening. They'll be blessed with wisdom and good judgment as they work together for the good of this community. These things we pray and thank thee for, and do so humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the thy of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director Powell and Mr. Bittman.
Mayor, I would move that we approve the agenda for this city council work meeting on November the 19th.
That motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I need to excuse this evening Mr. Riddle. He is out of town and he works so hard and so many miles all the time. And so we excuse him this evening. I want to change the agenda just a little bit. I'm going to, before I do the mayor's business and dirty a little laundry, I would like to begin with the youth council swearing in, and so I'd like to do that now. And thank you all for coming and your service and your upcoming service, and we recognize you. It's a teeny taste, if you will, of what we do, and I know that it's great. I want to express appreciation to you. And also to Mr. Phillips, who is just, you know, the ever-ready bunny on steroids. And making this happen and keeping involved and giving you the opportunity to serve. And we'll be honored to see a new city, youth city council, and we appreciate that. So let's have some ceremony.
All righty, Mayor, thank you very much. It really is a wonderful honor for me to be able to serve as the council liaison to the youth city council. As many of you may know, you all have children, but they are the next leaders. They are the next folks that'll be sitting in these chairs and in those seats over there, leading our community or some other community, state, and nation. And so this has been a wonderful opportunity that I've had to learn from them, and I hope they step away. Every year it's a little nostalgic for me because I get pretty close to these kids, and then I have to say goodbye and move on to the next group. What I'd like to do to begin with tonight is we're going to honor the outgoing youth city council who have served for the last year in Cedar City. They've done hundreds and hundreds of hours of service projects. They've raised money for Special Olympics. They have cleaned cemeteries. They have cleaned sidewalks. They've picked up trash at the interchange. They've helped with the moonwalk. They've helped with July Jamboree, the Spring Fiesta, Reefs Across America, youth projects in their schools. They're currently involved in a food drive in both of their high schools for this time of year. They have been very actively involved, and so I just really want to thank them. And if I could have each of you in the current youth city council come up front, please, and face the audience. You know who you are, Mr. Stanley, Ms. Griffiths, Ms. Allred. You know who you are. We do have a few people absent tonight. As they become seniors in high school, they get involved and they have jobs and they have many other things to do. We have one individual who's gone off to college already, and we have an outgoing gift of expression and thanks to them. And also your photographs, so don't leave without your photos, even you, Dave. You'll understand that. We waited for a full year for Dave to get his photograph. So Sonny Alder from Canyon View High School couldn't be here tonight. We have Sarah Allred from Canyon View High School. Melissa Griffiths from Canyon View High School. We have Jonas Hunt from Cedar High, and we will get that reprinted. They just, a letter on your name. We have Shannon Roche from Canyon View High School, our current youth city mayor. Right here, she's served as mayor. Elena Roundy from Cedar High School, who's also been honored on a national level for her involvement in government and has gone to Washington DC representing Girls Nation. So congratulations, Elena. Gabriel Smith from Cedar High School and Cole Stanley from Canyon View High School. These are your students who led us the last year. So a big round of applause for all of them. Remember, and when you're a certain age, you can run for election and you can be up here sitting in these seats. Thank you all very much.
Do we have people taking pictures?
John's been taking pictures.
Okay, all right.
Do you want?
If anyone wants a photograph, get it now while they're standing there.
Jump up, do what you want. Okay.
Oh, we've got some late comers back there. Dave, thank you very much, Shannon. Take these photographs and distribute them. Thank you all very much. And I'll be seeing you around. I better be seeing you all around. I would like to ask the incoming youth city council to please come forward and stand in this line similar to all of those folks. I hope I have all 10 of you here tonight. Nobody told me they weren't going to be here.
Looks pretty close. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, damn.
I'm...
They're here.
What I will do is I'm going to read out your name. As I read out your name, just step forward so everyone knows who you are. After the introductions, then I will have our city recorder, Renan Savage, step forward, and she will officially swear you in. Immediately following the swearing in, please listen to me. All of you need to go out into the hallway, and Shannon Roche, our current youth city mayor, needs to get some contact information from you, okay? So just step outside after the swearing in and be as quiet as you can like you're in the halls during recess or something. Yeah, after the swearing in, please come forward and shake hands with all the city council members and city staff. After the swearing in, okay? All right, so just step forward as I read your name so they can identify who you are, please. McKinley Bagley from Canyon View High School. Thank you. Madeline Blazard from Cedar High School. Jade Borcik from Canyon View High School. Borcik, Borcik. Borcik, I'll get that. Ellie Bullock from Canyon View High School. Parker Dotson, Cedar High School. I'm flipping pages. Charity Herring from Canyon View High School. Asher Ray from Cedar High School. Lucy Shahah from Lighthouse Commonwealth. Our attorney, Gabriel Smith, from Cedar High School. And our final member is Sage Whitaker from Cedar High School. I will now turn the time over to Renan.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
I'm discharged for duties.
I'm discharged for duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Uh, just have him step forward and sign. Can I do that? You just need to sign that piece of paper. Do you have a pen there or a couple of pens? We've got to make this official. Yes, she's not going to know who you are. And you'll just return those back to Ms. Savage after they're signed. You will get a copy of these afterwards for your files. Moms and dads, if you want another picture, just have them step aside, and you're welcome to get another photograph. They will meet in December, our first meeting in December to select the youth mayor, our youth city recorder, and the youth communications director. When you're all done, just come by here and shake hands with the council and with staff. Give those papers back to Ms. Savage. Congratulations. Congratulations. Looking forward to it. Yeah. Your uncle's here. Congratulations. Thank you. Looking forward to working with you. Please remember to go outside and sign paperwork for contact information. Thank you all very much. Parents and families, thank you for being in attendance. That concludes my time, Mayor.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the community that came out last night and supported Dancing with the Community Stars. It was very successful. They raised over $100,000.
Wow. And it was full.
And it was full.
There's 900, what, 990 seats on that auditorium and a few chairs that they brought in because it was full to the brim.
Somebody's leaving the jacket. One of the youth, there you go. Oh, it's Cole.
Good. Now I have some business that I'd like to start with. First of all, I didn't, too late to get it on the agenda, but I want to get it taken care of here. Trying to continually trying to fill and do the right job for our committees in the city. And I've had a different thought on the downtown parking, and so I have recalled, I've called Mark Barufi and Neil Burnt, Burnt, Burnt. And as a new one, Mark Barufi, Maria, reappointing him. I released him a few months ago, even though he continued to come to meetings because I guess I didn't get the message to him. But I think I've come to the conclusion that he had had two terms. But I've changed my mind on that when it comes to downtown parking. I believe that if you have a business and you're impacted by the parking situation at your business, you want to be represented, you should be. So Mark, if you will come forward and just say a word or two to the council, come up to the, you want to do that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't think Neil's here, but I did.
No, he is Neil. He is Neil.
Oh, I'm not. Sorry, you're Neil.
Mark's not here.
Mark's not here. I'm sorry. I got you mixed up the other day, too. I went over on this road trip over to those businesses over there to get this done. I got them all mixed up. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, my name's Neil Burnt, and I do have a business downtown. And I, yes, I do have a personal interest, but for me, I think it's more than that. We've been down there seven, well, probably going on eight years now, and...
What's your business, sir? I'm sorry. What's your business?
Oh, Benisa's Thai Cuisine.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I've seen the parking get progressively worse and competitive, and it not only impacts the downtown businesses, I feel it impacts the whole town because it's kind of a centerpiece of Cedar City. We have Shakespeare. We have the university. And I've come to really like the Shakespeare. I have a lot of customers annually that we get. And they talk to me, and I like to talk too much. My wife's the owner, and she kind of gets mad about that. You know, let's talk to work. But anyway, a lot of the people that do come there, their biggest issue is parking, and they will tell me that. And I've seen it, you know, over the years. And we do lose a lot of customers, a lot of people. I don't know how it impacts the other businesses, but I do believe it can affect the long-term vitality of that whole area. You know, less people, you know, the less support Shakespeare has, the less support the downtown businesses have. And it's just not the downtown businesses. These people come there and they go all over town, not just downtown. So, you know, I feel like I not only have the personal interest, but I kind of want to figure out how we could solve some of these things long-term, not only just short-term.
Thank you. Exactly. We appreciate that. And so what will happen is this will be on the agenda next week. To be confirmed, but I wanted to give you a heads up. Oh, yeah. Two weeks. That interesting meeting, it's going to be a work action in the same meeting.
Yep.
But we'll take care of that in two weeks. But I'd like you to come along and shake hands with the council members, and I have put your name forward for not, for, to be put on that committee. I'm adding one more member to that committee by doing this, but the ordinance, as near as I can tell, says a minimum of three on each side, a minimum of six, three from the east and three from the west. And so we're going to have one more. Seven. Thank you very much. I want to, yeah, I want to talk for a minute about something that's got me fired up. I was going to say some things about all the problems that have been brought to me and all the angry customers and all the problems in building today, and even maybe name some names, but I've decided not to. You'd know some of them. It'd be obvious some of them to you. But I want to talk today a bit about Tom Horatio in Harito.
Harito.
Harito. Yeah, there he is.
Not hiding too well.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, you are here. I want to talk about that. He's definitely our friend. As far as I'm concerned, he's a community hero, and without a question, he took on a labor of love when he took on the Cedar Hotel. And I'm sure we've all been in it and we all love it. It's amazing what can happen. It's not that I'm, it's hard. Let's just face it. It's very hard when you take something like the old Cedar Hotel and try to not remodel it, but repair it. He did not want to remodel or change it. He wanted it exactly the way it was. He loved the way the old hotel was there, and so he did everything he could to repair it. And I know what that's like. I started my first business in an insulation shop that had previously been Runway Perry's shop where we repaired the old buses. Then I took a sewing factory and I made that into a distribution center. And later that distribution center became a corporate office. I took a glass company and made a heating and cooling store out of it. Took a grocery store and made a plumbing supply house out of it. I took a bolt repair with literally a swimming pool in the back of it where they could stick bolts down in the water and see if they leaked. I took over a vulcanizing conveyor belt plant in Price. That was an interesting one. I took an auto repair shop in Springville. I took an abandoned fuel bulk plant down on First West. I took a sheep shed. We, I didn't, my children, took a sheep shed and made a grade school out of it. I took a bowling ball factory in Kentucky and made a distribution center out of it. I took abandoned office buildings in the Philippines and made a office, restored an office. But these are hard projects. So I have been down this road, maybe not quite as much as Tink has. He's probably got me beat by a few, but this entrepreneur-ing and trying to do these things. And the problem is, is that if you don't, these buildings are privately owned, and if you don't, something doesn't change on them, they sit there forever, and they don't fall down because they're really well-built, and there's no way they can fall down. It's like the school down there. Everybody thought it was, should be condemned and should be abandoned. It should be this and it should be that and everything. But the problem was there were some blue lamb beams that went clear over the top of that thing, and they weren't, they were solid. And so everything else could fall down without a question, but those beams aren't going to fall down. And it would go on for years and decades, literally. And there are buildings that we know of, and in some of the towns, we're a pretty fast-growing town. And generally speaking, you just bulldoz them down, and you build something new because it's just a lot easier to do. And that's fine if you want, no offense to Mavericks, but if you want Mavericks and Walmarts and so forth, if you want them on your main street, then you just bulldoze them down and not worry about it. And start new because it's easier and by far it's cheaper. If you could only imagine what it would have taken to build a 100 by 200-foot metal building down on one, down on Main Street and put a, build a school in it rather than do what my son did with that old building. And it's beautiful, and I think most of you have been in it, or many of you have been in it. And it's a school that's very functional. It works extremely well as a school, and it was not easy. And so these things are very difficult. I've talked to Tom. I've been over there. I've been hearing his grief forever. And it just is one more time, and I'm embarrassed, Tom. I'm embarrassed that we can't help you a little more to finish your dream, to try and do what you want to do, which is to restore an old building, and what we want you to do with a historic building, a building built in 1890 in Cedar City, perhaps probably the oldest building on Cedar City's Main Street.
Not quite, but it's right up there.
But what you did to repair that old thing is just mind-boggling to me. And I know that a year ago, we came down to a great fight. You were fighting, and I was trying to fight for you and over a sprinkler system. And you didn't want to do it, and I didn't blame you. It wasn't the way the building was built. I want the historical building, not the new-fangled one, and you caved. You caved, and you put a, I don't know what you spent, $100,000 putting a sprinkler system in that thing that you really wasn't. I'm not, I'm not a fan of the windows. My office doesn't have an egress on my window, and none of my office buildings have that. Maybe your bedroom does need an egress, but to change all those old windows out to a new model isn't my dream for the old hotel in Cedar City. It's historical. And so I know we're giving you grief, and you are trying to get done. You want to, you want a business license in that hotel so you can do business. Then you want to leave in a week and a half, and you want, where in the world are you going to? I forget.
You have to come with a microphone if you're going to speak, Mr. Harito. I'm sorry.
I'll speak for you. It's Mongolia. And it'd be gone for a year and a half, and so now we're going to, he can't get finished. He needs a business license. And he came to me, and I put out an email. Scott, I put you on that email.
I saw it, Mayor. I saw it.
I know you're...
I'm very concerned as well.
So I just feel like that he, the way I understand it, and we'll let the folks speak who want to speak and tell me where I'm wrong, and I'm sure they will. But my understanding is, is that they don't have a building permit for a sprinkler system. So now we want a building permit for the building again, and we have a building permit for the building to do it, I think, back in the day. But, and to that, we need to now engineer the structure. We need to engineer the plumbing. We need to engineer the electrical. We need to engineer, I don't know what we have to engineer, but you'll never get it done in a week and a half.
Well, I just want to touch on one thing, and then I'll let other council members respond. As a member of the Historic Preservation Commission and one who's trying to get our downtown on the National Registry of Historic Places, Mr. Harito, when he came forward about, what, four years ago, Tom? The very idea of what he wanted to do is exactly what we're trying to get with older building. He's trying to take an older building that had many uses over the years and was changed to a number of different kinds of commercial entities. And we applaud him for wanting to restore it back to its historic nature. I'm sure most everybody's been in there at one time or another for an event or something. I was in there just nine days ago. Thank you that he gave us a tour of what he had done on both the second and starting the third level of it. And he's done a remarkable job of restoring things right down to the original fixtures, the original faucets, the original toilets. It's just amazing, and they look brand-new, but he's taken hours to restore. So I want to support him, and I want to figure out what the stumbling block's over, and let's get this thing done. He's trying to do exactly what we want done, so I don't want us to be the stumbling block that he can't get his business license and operate legally. There's been events held in there, so let's don't be having this be done illegally. Let's get it done.
So I think we're still in the dark. We learned on the email.
Right.
So if...
Maybe somebody needs to explain it.
Yeah, we're confused.
I don't know who wants to step up and explain because I just got a response to the email.
So Mr. Harito came to Mayor Green and and requested to get a business license and operate the Cedars Hotel, which used to be Jolly's.
And I apologize because I'm not on the docket here.
We don't issue business licenses unless there's compliance with Cedar City ordinances, and those include zoning ordinances, building ordinances, fire code, and everything else that the city council has asked us to enforce. Business license is the last step, and we won't issue that license unless we have compliance with everything else. I know staff's reached out to Tom today to try to set up a meeting to go through whatever they need to to work through with him. I don't know what the result of that was. I just that's all the information I have for you.
So what is deficient in the code?
I don't know. When the mayor when the mayor sent out his email to staff demanding that we issue a a business license, I asked staff, what do we need from Tom? Now's the time to get it on the table and let Tom know, and we'll get it finished, and we can issue the business license. But we can't just issue it if there's outstanding things to be accomplished.
So maybe, Tom, maybe you need to share with us because maybe we're not, Tom, maybe we just don't know what is deficient. I don't know. I mean, we have some of the department heads back there, but I don't I don't know what we're I don't know what we're short on. I don't know what the problem is. I mean, it looks pretty well. That's all. Let's leave it right there.
Tom, I have one question real quick. What business license are you going for? Is it for a hotel? Is it for an event center? Are they the same? Does it matter? What business license are we going for?
Right now, she's trying to get the event center down below so they could use that for an event, you know, ballroom type situation.
Okay, so it's an event center business license?
Yep.
Okay.
And I don't want to take too much time. And I, like I said, once again, I apologize for those who are on the docket. But and I didn't expect this. But yes, I mean, we've been going on for years with this, and it's always one thing after another. We tried alternative methods, different items. I know exactly what you're saying, and we've covered pretty much all of them. But there's a lot of things, you know, that we don't have and we can't do because the building's 150, you know, 130 years old. You know, just recently, it was just brought to my attention. They wanted a full set of the mayor mentioned, a full set of plans and, you know, plumbing engineers and electrical engineers, structural engineers, all those things that I don't understand why we need it. But I and I wish they would have told me from day one, but still, that wasn't the issue. The main one of the issues was the fire issue. And we fought it. I fought alternative methods. I spent countless hours and many dollars trying to get that thing finalized or get it an alternative method so we don't have to do sprinklers. But like the mayor mentioned, I I caved in, and I finally did the sprinkler. Sprinkler is 100% done and activated and using and working. Problem is, I can't get a write-off. They won't give it to me because I have to go to I have to get a whole full set of plans and permits because there's no permit just for a sprinkler system. And I said, well, that's not my problem. I did what you told me to do. We're still waiting, and I and I I'm hoping to schedule a meeting with Mike, with the fire marshal. I tried today, but he wasn't available, I guess. And we're trying for tomorrow. See if he's available again. We have the plans. We want.
Available tomorrow, Mike?
Oh, there he is. You're here. I didn't see you hiding. See, and I was kind, too. I said, you were unavailable. So I I didn't. And even Drew tried a couple of times. I think he tried to contact you as well. I I said, but I mean, we're hoping to give him a walk through, and we were hoping that it's, you know, it's what we needed. But just last week is when all these new things came up that they wanted, you know, a full blown permit, you know, packet. If you're familiar with permits, it's I got all the way down to the prairie dogs I got to get submitted to you guys. And I'm like, I don't want to submit a prairie dog on something that's been there. I don't need these little details. I have the airport I have to define and all these other things that are a full packet on submitting a permit, which I've done before, and I've done other projects here in Cedar. I know the routine. But this one in particular, because of the situation, I thought, I don't need those things. I shouldn't have to need those things. And, you know, from day one, it was never my intention. Now, I've always been told if I would have left it as a hotel or retail, I wouldn't need a fire sprinkler, and I wouldn't need any of this if I would have just left that zone because I'm changing the use to the event. And that which the event made the most sense because the only event, the only options down, it was maybe a restaurant or the event thing. I mean, what else would you do with the first floor?
Don't start the restaurant.
Yeah, I didn't. I didn't want a restaurant.
Three bowl sinks. It it isn't the it isn't what there was there.
So I was against the restaurant, obviously, but I we couldn't think of what the use for that downstairs was for. What we could do with it. I mean, who's going to put another boot store that's that large? So it didn't, you know, really make too much sense, you know. So we left it at that, and we we came up with that, and we thought and we and even now, like I said, if those who go by, there's no signs on the front. There's no nothing on the glass. She hasn't advertised at all, advertise wise. And so she wants to start getting full bore and going on this doing these events and things. And I said, I I can't. I can't until I get this finalized. At one point, we got a temporary business license. She did when she first started. Somehow, she's a member of the Chamber of Commerce and and Rotary Club or something, and they were able to get that. And that's fine, too. I don't mind that if they want to get a if they can want to give a permit until some of these other things are finalized out. But yeah, there's quite a bit of time and expense put into seeing to still be at point zero, and we've been on it for a few years. And I know I know they've been sending us lists, but the list that they're requiring is what we've been trying to alter by doing alternative methods that are paid by engineers that do this for a living. I mean, I hired two engineers, two professionals from New York that restore buildings to come look at this and and see if some alternative methods, which were not approved, even though they're approved other places, which I understand how that works. But we are with that. And, you know, I I can only do so much. And the unfortunate fact is, I don't know if it's unfortunate, but I'm leaving in nine days. I won't be available for quite some time. I hate to leave that abandoned. I mean, I want to open doors to the public to come look at and see, oh, I want to have an event here. I want to see what this place looks. That's our intention was to open it up from the beginning.
Yeah.
To the city to see this beautiful historical building, which is there's not very many that I don't think there's anything like that in Cedar.
No, there's not.
That you can come and look at a piece of history.
There's not.
We have paintings and pictures from Cedar City that are original, original furniture from that same hotel that people in the city has donated to me. And we've restored them, and we want to use them. We want to share that. I can't do that. I don't know. It won't happen for a year and a half if I can't get something, at least a temporary. And like I said, now I'm glad that Mike's here because I do have a complete plan, everything, and I had engineers draw it all up, and I had it done and completed the work. It's active. It's monitored. It's it's a fire system. It's complete. They were supposed to run it by him. I don't know if they did, and he I don't think they have because we talked about that today, Drew and I. We didn't. We hadn't seen any record of it. But hopefully I I get a chance to get with Mike.
Well, it seems to me that we need to look at ordinances, maybe different between new buildings and restorations or remodels of existing buildings because we certainly want our buildings to be safe. We don't want anyone to be in peril when they're at some event or something like that, or shopping or whatever. But the same token, restoring a 150 year old building is very different than building a brand new building from the ground up.
So is that a health or safety issue? Or is it just because we can't check the box on?
I think a lot is checking the box.
Safety is always is a priority. That's Mike and a building department as well. It's always priority. And I and I believe we are at that point. We are like completely safe. Adding all these additional things that, like I said, just recently came into play because now that we finished that, we wanted to do that. We wanted to get a business license. Things that were pretty close, we started working those channels. Then it came out that, yes, we you need to get a whole permit packet and start from beginning, get everything laid out. And I said, I don't care about the spray dogs anymore. I don't. Well, you didn't hear me say that, but I can't, you know, I just I'm not going to do the whole work. One, I don't have the time. Nine days, I can't do it, obviously. But I was hoping that at least she could get a business license so she could open the doors and say, people on the street, come on in.
Well, if you needed that whole permitting thing, it should have started four years ago, and you should have been told.
It did. The permits have changed in each thing because each time the permit is it's hard to explain because nobody knows what permit to call that. There's no such thing as a remodel permit or a re-repair, what we call we upgraded, you know, a lot of we didn't add any fixtures. All the lights are exactly where they were when they were original. That's kind of went through a lot of work to make it like that and from pictures and different things. And we just outlets or stuff. The same with plumbing. We didn't add any sinks or toilets or anything.
Well, clearly, Mr. Harito, if we were to work on anything like that, we cannot get that done in nine days. We can't get a new ordinance for restoration or remodels and preservation.
And there's no permit for that anyway.
Right. But I mean, even if we created one, it couldn't happen in nine days. So we have to figure out what we can do to get through the hoops now to try and get this resolved in the next nine days.
I think I think the fire marshal would be our key person. I think if he doesn't feel it's safe, by all means, if he feels it's not safe, I'll follow him. I'll support him.
Yeah. Well, let's see how it goes.
I'll support because I want to be safe.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Mike Scherz with the Fire Department. I will just disagree with the last comment. I'm not the key to this. This is the building department and the building official and staff. This is a collective issue. This doesn't fall to just be the fire sprinkler system in question is one component of the overall work. We don't have a permit in place for any of the work conducted at the Cedars Hotel. And so that's the issue, and it's not just the fire marshal.
So have you looked at the fire system and feel that it's safe and functional and?
I have not. We have not inspected the the work that's been completed. A a plan was submitted some time ago. The last correspondence that I had with Mr. Harito was in 2024.
So has anybody inspected any of the work as far as the city staff, city inspectors?
Many times. Drew's been in there. You've been in there.
Sure.
People have been coming and going for four years from the city there.
Yeah. But we we haven't inspected the fire sprinkler system. That that work.
It's brand new. It was required to that was supposed to. I think Mr. Barito thinks that that's the last step.
Yeah.
Well, it does need to be inspected, absolutely.
And so he should inspect it tomorrow and and give him a we'll get him a license, and he can go on his mission. His daughter can open a business in there.
Just a question. Was the electrical upgraded? Was all the wiring and stuff upgraded?
You got to come to the microphone if you're going to talk. Sorry, sir.
So it wasn't single wire electrical. It was upgraded to more.
It was upgraded to current standards?
Tom Marito again. The the wire electrical had been upgraded back in 84. I think when they did that remodel, they redid new panels everywhere throughout the building.
When Jolly's remodeled.
When Jolly's had it, yeah. When they did that addition. That's when they put a new panel, and then everything had to tie into that new one. So they that's when they turned the rest. But all that is, anything that was unsafe that we felt was unsafe, of course, we repaired, and we, you know, there was a few cloth wire areas, and we said, don't put that. Let's make sure we upgrade that to conduit, and we put conduit. And all the conduct that was exposed, because that's a lot of is still exposed. And so you could see it all. So there shouldn't be an issue there at all.
So is the you're really trying to get a clearance for the bottom building? Nothing on the upper part?
On the third floor in the attic is is uncomplete. We haven't done anything on those at all. And that won't happen until, of course, another year or two, a couple of years until I return. But that.
Are you trying to get C of O for the second floor?
First and second floor, yes.
And the second floor is apartments?
It's not apartments. It's actually, it's offices. It's a there's it's office to a sense that, for example, there's a brides room. If there's they have an event, they want to put a brides room up there, and a groom's room so they could change and get things ready.
Okay.
The other section is just offices, two, three offices. And I have a personal room that I use up there. When I work here, I stay on that, and I use it as my personal thing.
So so Paul, with is there anything that states that this is acceptable for the public? Or if we do this permit, or is the city going to be liable if something goes wrong if there's no inspections on it? Where do we stand with that?
Yeah. Well, yeah, if we don't have if we don't if we haven't inspected the place and we and it's not up to code, and we issue a business license to them, we take on a certain degree of liability.
Do we know what code is not met? Because the sprinkling system can be inspected, correct?
I don't. Again, I had a brief conversation with Drew, and Drew said he tried to get hold of Tom to schedule a meeting to go through whatever they need to get through.
Do you know, Kent?
So I don't know all the details. I know that Tom and Drew had a significant discussion today.
Right?
But and and, you know, I know they talked through a lot of a lot of issues in that meeting today. My understanding, of course, I wasn't here three, four years ago when this whole process started. But my understanding is that the reason there has never been a permit issued is because there's never been a completed application to be able to even review to issue a permit. So that and and that goes back, you know, over the entire time that this has been in process.
So is it like a new construction permit, or do you?
That's the concern. Nobody knows what to call it.
Yeah, that's a good question. But I just what what I understand is that there have been communications, you know, over the years, you know, a lot of communications about, you know, we need this or we need that, and it hasn't come forth.
So he could have.
And so there's not hasn't been anything for staff to be able to respond to, to be able to help move this through.
So he could have continued business in there without doing anything if if the use was the same and there'd be no permits, no?
No, at some point, the city would have initiated prosecution for doing business without a license.
No, I'm saying that if he would have kept the if he would have did a boot store, he could have continued. Been doing business today, and and we're not concerned. So it's unsafe. It's safe if it's a boot store, and it's not safe if it's, you know, if it's a hall and event center, right? You know, I don't understand the logic.
Occupancy, there's more people, more things that happen.
The logic is, once you change uses in the premises, you have to upgrade to the current codes.
And that's our.
And it's nice that it's an old building, and it's nice that it's 100 plus years old, and it's a piece of history. But there's some unsafe things in a 100 year old building that current code does not allow. So the logic is, when you change that use and you upgrade the use, you got to upgrade to the current code.
So Paul, I have a question. I mean, as you know, this is probably not the only time we'll come across this. And I and it's it's a lengthy discussion that we're not going to have the full thing on right now. But what would be the way, in your opinion, that we move forward with where we have projects in old historic buildings? What group or I mean, is that something that, in your opinion, that there's got to be some give and take on these old buildings? We can't expect an old, you know, some old buildings can't necessarily always come up, I would think, 100% to modern code. You're just going to take away the entire historic part of it. So somehow, we have to identify buildings that leniency has to be given.
There's a there's an adopted code for restoration of old buildings that we follow.
Okay.
So there's there's a number of these residential building codes, plumbing codes, electrical codes. I think one of them's the Code Council Code for Restoration of Old Buildings.
Well, I do know that, too, Mr. Harito, employed and brought in at our suggestion, a consultant with the State Office of Historic Preservation from Salt Lake City. And he came down, and he advised Mr. Harito on ways that he should and still could qualify for historic credits, but he could still do certain amounts of remodeling. And they do this all over the state. I mean, they work for the state of Utah.
And we they till even now, they're still close. Everything I restore, they have to kind of approve in a sense.
Correct.
Like the windows and things that we had to upgrade for those, you know, egress purposes.
For the tax credit purposes.
For tax credit purposes, and also to be on the state lines.
Right.
There are certain rooms, certain walls that they said you cannot remove the plaster.
Correct.
In most cases.
So moving forward on this, I mean, we've got, obviously, a pretty quick timeline. Whether or not we can get things done in time or not is still to be seen. But to just to move on, can we and normally, this is something that council is not part of, right? I mean, this is that we have staff. We trust our staff. We have staff that are specialized in certain things for reasons. We're not engineers. We're not historic building people. Well, some of us have some more knowledge on building than others. But that's why one of the reasons we're glad you're here. So but can we just get an update? Once you've met with Drew, I mean, at this point, it sounds like he needs to meet with Drew. We need to get Mike or the Fire Department in there. Can we just get an email update if it's before next Wednesday on where things are at, what the list is of things that he's deficient? If we're able to give him a business license, if the city staff feels okay to do that, do that. And if not, I don't know, Renan, you're the business license person.
He has had a license for a retail business only.
And retail, I see, that's the thing. It's okay without a fire sprinkler with a retail and hotel, those two options, because that's where it's zoned. But because of the change, that's where I know, you know, I've been a contractor for over 30 years. I know how it works when you change the use premises and things. So that's the concern that I have. It's like, yeah, we if she can get the proper license, that would be what we're she's trying to accomplish. And I'm trying to accomplish for her as well.
It's one of these things where I don't think the council wants to get into the weeds of it all. But at the same time, we keep hearing, well, this and that, and this made it difficult, but no, like, specific. So I'd actually like to hear, these are the specific things that he is missing to get according to city code. And then I don't know if that's at the end point, we have to make a decision to give variance on those things, or we agree that, no, those things need to be done, and we'll just have to talk to staff at that point and.
And, you know, I whether I stay in town or not, it all depends on Mike. I don't know. Mike, are you available tomorrow? I mean, that's that's the biggest concern now. Okay, so tomorrow.
Thanks, Mike.
And I'll plan tomorrow. We should be able to get you an answer of something at least.
Well, on the fire, and then we got to get Brent over there, Drew.
Well, Drew Drew's concern is the fire. He says that's his biggest concern.
So if there has never been a permit pulled, why are there lots of inspections going on already? I I'm confused at this.
There's no inspections other than we should have an inspection.
Someone has to know what's deficient in our building department or somewhere.
The very the very start, when somebody comes to pull a permit, whether it's redo an old building or do a new building or do a subdivision, staff won't look at it until they give us a full packet of information.
But they've been over to inspect it.
But we didn't know what it is. Had a full packet of information, and the builder chose to proceed with with building. So, yeah, our staff has been over there to look at it.
The first day one, they didn't know what, I would give them what they knew, what they needed. But they don't know any because we couldn't define what it is that we call this. When you repair, there's no repair, repair, and there's no restorer, and there's no type of permits for those things. Because we didn't move any walls, we didn't move any plumbing fixtures.
Well, but you are restoring. I mean, that's what you are.
If you had a permit for restore, restoration, I'd do all that criteria. I would know that because I'm getting into restoration. But that's what was our concern when we started the permit. But Drew, even Drew knows, he goes, we didn't know what to call it. I said, I know. I don't know what to call it. I've never seen one. But because I want the fire, I needed a permit for the fire, which, like I said, we decided finally to do. And what we do, well, that has to go into a building permit still at this point. Okay, what kind of building permit? A complete building? That means I have to start from square one with all these itemized things that you want me to do.
We understand.
I don't. So you guys understand.
Just a question. Have there been any inspections from the city staff?
Years ago, yeah. City staff had come in and walked through. Back when, different people in different departments, I'd see them in.
But nobody within the last couple of years?
Not in the last couple of years. I'm thinking, no. I mean, other than, I think a year ago, Mike and I walked, you know, and we talked about, you know, I kind of explained to him the alternative methods. And he put me onto a third party, which said they won't accept those, but I.
So there's really nobody that can say this is a safe building for the public?
Were they coming in as pass fail or were they coming in to just maybe kind of guide and hey, you should look at this?
Who's that? You mean the original ones or just recently?
The city inspectors, yeah. You know, as we talk about Drew's been in the building many times.
Pretty much to look at it, I think, to see what, what we have. And at that, I remember when we first started, when we first pulled the permit, we didn't know what to call it. I said, let's walk through it. Let's look at it. I think, I don't think you were the mayor yet at the time.
Did you pull a permit first?
At one point I did, when they, when the building was going to be demolitioned, that we're gonna demolish that building. That's where, that's where I ended up buying it because I didn't want them to tear it down. That's the whole thing. And I said, I could save this thing. And that's when I pulled the permit to lift that whole building up. And we lifted that whole building up 12 inches, put a new foundation, got a permit for it, had it inspected, approved. Steel columns in the basement's holding that whole thing up now, like it should be. Because the Jollies removed those for some, put their shelving and they moved the columns out of the way. They honestly did that because I talked to the Jollies and they said, yeah, well, my dad wanted this here. And so we took out this column. I said, you didn't think that's gonna.
So is that a specific permit that's different than what they're doing?
That's the day, like, the month I bought it, the first thing I did is I pulled that permit to make that safe so I could go in. And that was done and completed and it was finalized. Other than that, structurally, that was the structural issue at the beginning. And now from that point, we started repairing things and the city said, well, maybe we need a permit. I said, okay, well, what permit do we need? Well, let's.
There really hasn't been structural things done to it since that.
That was the only needed, one needed.
That was the only needed. You want, you didn't want it different than it is.
Drafters are strong, everything's fine.
And when you did that permit, they signed off on the safety of the building when you did the foundation, correct?
I don't know about the safety of the building, but I signed off for that permit.
It was a foundation permit.
Of us putting a foundation with a steel column and goes, I had engineers bring it all up, what I needed, how big they need to be, all that was done. And we did it and completed and, of course, we were all happy because that meant we could save the building.
So may I suggest, in the interest of time, that we get the updates from the fire marshal and other people after we visit?
Well, and Kent, can, Drew's not here, but who would final, who would make, who gets the final decision on which permit needs to be pulled? Is that you or is that Drew?
Drew, I think.
That'll be Drew. Obviously, I, I'll be in the conversation with.
Can we get that?
And do you think there is probably a need to do something particular with these old buildings? The, restoring an old building to update our code? Do we have a gap in there?
So if the, if the city were to adopt some type of ordinance to specifically try to address it, I don't know what that ordinance would say. Because if that ordinance says we're not gonna follow codes, then our building official isn't going to be able to issue a permit. Building official has to be able to certify that it meets codes to issue a permit.
Sure, but there are, there are. But, but there's some things that are more health and safety issues than others that we hold them up with that, you know. Anyway, I, I think we go overboard sometimes on inspections when we could just be concerned with health and safety.
The codes are based around health and safety. That's why they exist. And the reason that he's into the code requirements he is, is because of the change of occupancy of the building. That was a choice that was made to change the occupancy of the building. Part of the effect of that choice, or the, yeah, the results of that choice are that there are certain codes that need to be met. And that's what has not been met, has not been submitted to the city to even review, to meet those codes.
So we don't know what has or hasn't been met other than there's no, they have no, no application for a building permit, correct? So if we can get some more of the details, we can hash through this.
Tomorrow will be a good move, like I said, if I could get with these, with Drew. Because Drew's already on board for tomorrow, anytime we're ready to do it. Because he wants, he wants to see this finalized as well. I mean, if I left it as a retail store, I could be.
You could be doing business yesterday, right?
It's safe if I use a retail, but if I do something else, it's not.
All right, Mayor.
And I understand that. I understand why it's not though.
Mayor, are you okay then if we get quick updates on this and move forward?
Tomorrow.
Yes. Thank you.
Tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harido.
I think they're, yeah. Okay. That's what I have. Council members, do you have other issues today?
Well, oh, go ahead.
I just want to, of course, everyone left, but just the live nativity is next Saturday.
Yes, I know.
And we're gonna have Christmas festivities and we'll have live animals and it's all, it's been, we're in our third year running with the, with this. So it'll be a fun time.
We got little angels and choir singers and all kinds of things going on. Yeah, I forget, we're not meeting until after it's over with. There's a lot going on November 29th.
Yes.
Downtown lighting, live reindeer, music, Christmas markets, live nativity, Jubilee of Trees. There's a lot happening.
Mayor, I have three things. I'll make them really quick. One, I just want to take a quick second of personal privilege. As we go in, we won't be meeting next week, so as we go into the Thanksgiving holiday, I just wanna, you know, just give my thanks to all the people that support us. And especially at this time, I want to give thanks to my amazing wife. Last week, she gave birth to our seventh child and everything went perfect. And so the city is growing one more kid at a time and our, the hospital here did a great job. And so, you know, none of us could be up here without those that support us and I think we'll all agree on that. But two other things. One, I want to ask Kenny, tomorrow, the statewide grant workshop for the rec is gonna be at SUU. I plan on attending three to five. Are you planning on being at that meeting? Ken, do you know about that? Okay, and Councilman Phillips may or may not also join. So three to five tomorrow at SUU. Anybody else that wants to come? It's a meeting about all the different grant programs that the state has as far as recreation. And they do a tour once a year and come locally, so. And then the other thing, Mayor, I wasn't sure if it, Paul was maybe gonna bring it up via staff, but we gotta talk about it sometime in this meeting. You mentioned in your email to us, you'd like us to talk about, and that's why Mr. Monroe is here. Do we want to talk about that letter and?
You can do it now or you can do it.
Well, two, now.
Two seconds from now when we do staff.
Let's just do it right now. Paul's here and so.
The Water Conservancy District received a letter from Beaver County claiming it was on behalf of Toilet County, Jewett County, Miller County, Beaver County, raising some issues and about the Pine Valley Water Project. It's a letter that's written by an attorney firm out of New Mexico. And the Conservancy District has prepared a response. They would like us to join the response. Those were both emailed to you yesterday when we got them. The only thing we're asking tonight is if it's okay the mayor signs a response letter and then we'll bring a resolution to you in two weeks ratifying that, that signature and for the response letter.
And that's just due to the dates that it's, that we're asked to respond by, correct?
The Conservancy District wants to get their response out by the 24th. And we don't meet again until like the 5th.
I mean, from a legal standpoint, Randall's not here, but Paul, I'll ask you, I mean, you, do you feel fine with us?
It's just a letter. We've.
It's not binding.
It's, it's not a resolution. We're not going into debt. It's not an ordinance. We're not doing anything like that. This city on prior councils has passed multiple resolutions expressing support for the Pine Valley Water Project. It's really not that controversial of a deal. Just wanna keep you guys involved so you know what's going on and have the mayor sign it. And then Paul can send it to a list of about 20 people.
I did read through that. Paul, do you have anything you want to add to this or we covered it?
I, I think it's a pretty good idea. I don't know, are we the first city that has responded yet because of the timeframe? Okay. Okay, very good.
I read through it. I don't have any problem with it. I think it's fine. Thanks.
Yeah, same way here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks, councilors.
So we'll get the mayor to sign it tomorrow and we'll get it over to you, Paul.
Anything from our new guy?
Yes, I will be out of town December 3rd.
Oh, that's our next meeting.
Yeah, we're going.
You don't need to tell us. You just say you're not available.
I'm not gonna be here.
I'm not gonna be here. I'm gonna be out of town. Actually, I'll be out of the country, so.
Good for you.
Thank you.
You've taken a vacation already? We just, I'm just kidding. You just take one.
Got a new job and he's already gonna be gone.
Mayor, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. That says probably it. We've taken care of the swearing of the youth council. Staff, anything from staff? Yes.
Yeah, Jonathan has an item we'd like to talk about.
Jonathan Staff, the City Engineering Department. Kent, if you can maybe scroll down to the, to the bottom of this. So the top part of this chart shows expenses that we've discussed previously about the proposed well just south of 3,000 North. As we've discussed this as staff and also with our consultant, we realize there's probably some other things that are going to need to go into this well to make it available for municipal use. One thing that we need to remember with a, with an ag well is that it's constructed differently than a municipal well, obviously. One of the main differences is that the well is constructed with a perforated casing rather than, and 3/8-inch pea gravel, which is much coarser than we would use for a municipal, municipal well typically. And so, so the sand tends to migrate through that more easily. And so as we looked at that, we just wanted to make the city council aware of some of the other costs that would need to be done in order to properly control the sand. And so it's just something to consider as, you know, as discussions go forward with purchasing the well, that there likely will be some additional costs there.
So are these required or they're just nice and it'll help the sand? I mean, in other words, if we idle the well down, the sand's probably not gonna be as much of an issue either way, correct?
We don't know that for sure. I mean, it's, it's definitely a possibility if we, if we cut back the flow rate. So at the 1,800 gallons per minute, we were saying 10 parts per million on the sand. We like to, for a municipal well, we like to see that down at one part per million. The reason for that.
Last week, you said five.
So, okay, we could maybe live with five. One is, is definitely preferred.
Okay.
The reason for that is the more sand you bring in, you're just gonna go through pumps more often.
Yep.
I mean, it's just, it's just a fact. We've seen that out in Quichipah for years where we've had to replace pumps periodically because, because they just pump sand. So, so a little bit spent, you know, more, you know, the money spent upfront definitely pays off in the long run because, because then you're not having to replace the pump, you know, the pumps as often.
So Jonathan, right now, we're talking 254,000 plus another 188,000, which is gonna be almost $430,000, $440,000.
Before we get into the cost of purchasing the pump, I mean, the well.
The well, the well. Would it be possible that we, we don't necessarily have to purchase the well, but we do have to have a price? And, and, well, I for one, don't want to spend another penny until we at least know what the well is gonna cost. Because if it gets much higher, we could put a new well in.
Yep.
Right.
So we need to know the agreed upon price of the well.
So we were waiting for the tests that they got this week to then go and start negotiating.
Yeah, so now we can go to negotiation.
Now we can have a closed session and negotiate. Because now we know, and this, this will help in the negotiation, obviously.
Yeah. And as we're finishing those or as we're thinking about those numbers, this does not include, or does that additional well development, does that include the how, the, the structure and everything or is there that in addition to this?
So the additional well development is items such as swabbing the, the, the well, cleaning out whatever drilling fluids are left.
Okay.
Whether that's through a mechanical or chemical treatment. It doesn't include the s wedges. That's a different line item.
I guess what I'm getting at is Jonathan, when we go, whenever we have that discussion on the price of the well, can you have everything somewhat estimated? I mean, the price of the, the pump we're gonna have to buy, the wellhouse, the pipe out to the road? I mean, because if we're gonna, we gotta look at it as a whole package. Because if we just look at it as piece by piece, it seems great, but then we add them all together. So, okay.
Yeah, I could put together a full cost estimate.
I mean, that would be good.
But what we do know at this wells, it's a known commodity. We're not, we're not taking a risk on drilling and not getting good water. We know that that's there.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, so far, we're still in the okay range. We just gotta know what.
Yeah, we got, we gotta know.
I agree.
We gotta know what the wells cost.
Because these, none of these were things you were looking on moving on now or just, because none of this we would do until after we purchased the well.
No, that's correct.
Okay.
And we also need to find and make a deal on that property.
Yeah, we gotta get the property next door too, Stan.
Right, right. Yeah, so these are things just to be, just so you're aware of what, you know, some additional costs could be. And so, yeah, I'll get you a full cost estimate on that. We do know the flow rate's good. We know the drawdown's good. It's just, you know, the sand.
Quality's good.
So, and the quality is good, so.
I guess, do you have an update on how the drawdown went? Everything's, oh, wait, did we talk about that last week?
Yeah, we talked about that last week.
That's right, we did.
Yeah, so it was, it was good. So I'll keep you informed on that as we.
And it was 1,500 gallons a minute, right?
It was 1,800.
You gotta take a haircut.
It was 1,800, but after the haircut, it's 12.
Okay, but even if you idle it down to 1,000, it probably doesn't kick up anyway. We can talk about that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll provide that information, so.
Yeah, put together the whole thing in one big package if possible.
Good to move ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anyone else from staff tonight? Anything else public? Let's hear from the public. Christian?
Yes, thank you, Jesus. Hello, my rich town, my rich people. I'm so happy that Congress.
What's your name?
You're funny. I just said my name. Christian Lee Simmons, all those rich people at home watching. I wanted to know what you guys think about the Epstein files coming out. And, and I want to know what the public thinks. Thank you, right now.
I think that is a very complicated national issue that we are probably not gonna talk much about at city council. That would be my thought.
I'm Steve Miller. I am a resident in Montevista subdivision where the new road was just put in on 800 North. I would like to request some speed limit signs in our subdivision as it has become a drag strip. And I do have concerns about my grandchildren, my nieces, my nephews, and also for the safety. Is there any way we could get some speed limit signs in our subdivision?
My, my thought on that, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Fugel. 800 North, as I understand, is in the city. Your subdivision is not in the city. So I think we could probably place some speed limit signs, I don't know the old requirements, on 800 North. But within your subdivision, you would have to go to the county.
Okay, but the sub, the city owns the street.
The 800 North.
Yes.
800 North.
800 North, city owns that.
3,900.
Yeah, when you say in your subdivision, you're talking about on 800 North within the subdivision.
Yes, I'm sorry, on 800 North. The city owns that road. That's what was master planned in, which I'm fine with.
That's correct, that's correct.
But it is. It's a beautiful road, Bill, but it's a drag strip.
I'm just talking about the other streets behind you in that subdivision that is not part of the city.
Correct, yeah, we're just talking 800 North. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify.
So I, I've just mentioned that we are in the process of, of doing the engineering study on 800 North to determine what the appropriate speed limit should be there. So once we determine the appropriate speed limit, then we can get that posted.
Okay, is it not true that a subdivision, residential subdivision, is generally 25 miles an hour?
That 800 North is a major collector roadway. It is not a general rule that a major collector roadway would be posted at 25 miles per hour.
It depends on the width of the road that goes, if it goes through.
Ours is pretty narrow compared to the new one, that's for sure.
How, how long do you think that will be, Mr. Fugel?
We have the counters out now doing the speed study. We'll get that data back in and look at all of the factors to come up with that recommendation, probably within the next few days to a week.
Oh, okay. So, but then, by the time, next time we meet in two weeks?
Yes, we should have something there.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you.
I'm Rick Bryant. This is my wife Kathy. We're involved with several events in Cedar City. We had a little free time, so we decided to create another one. The Holiday Hoopla Festival. It's scheduled for December twenty-seventh at the-
In the Cedar City Hotel?
Cross-Halls Event Center. Yeah, hey, I came up with that. I thought it was cute, so we went with that. We handed out some information for the city council.
Thank you.
It'll be, it'll be free for the public to attend. We're going to have food and vendors, entertainment, music. Fun Time Inflatables will be there for the kids. We want to make that free. So far, the funding is off just a little bit, but we're working on that. But we just wanted to let the city council know we've got a new event in town. We are the festival city, so, so we're trying to maintain that, make sure we, we are the festival city.
What are we doing, because it says sponsored by Cedar City, what are we doing as a city to contribute?
Well, yeah, I'll let Kathy.
You are supporting us and letting us do this.
There you go.
I have actually talked to Brandon already, and he has graciously consented to donate six-hundred dollars towards the event.
Okay, so that's how come our logo, I was just curious, the use of the logo and-
Well, I think it's very brave of you to wanna step out and do another thing. I guess the Renaissance Fair wasn't enough for you, but that's six months from now, so-
And they do the twenty-fourth of July and-
That's eight months from now.
The Renaissance, yeah, they do a lot.
You know, I think this is a wonderful thing if we, I hope it can be a go because there is a lot that happens before Christmas and then not so much in between. So, that might be a good time to try and get the kids out of the house and have some fun.
What's an ugly sweater meltdown? Are we lighting stuff on fire?
Actually-
Are we burning some sweaters?
Actually, I, I thought about that with that name. Maybe at the end of the contest, we just throw them in a pile and light it off. I don't think that's appropriate. But we are so, we're also gonna have a family jammy jam contest as well, and that's on the flyer. So, just some cute things for the public to help fill that awkward time when family is here for Christmas and New Years. You don't know what to do for the kids, but we've got one day covered.
There you go.
There you go, that's it.
Well, congratulations. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Yes, sir.
Grant Parker. For the, the whole conversation on the hotel, if he got permitted to sell boots that were ten thousand dollars, and there just happened to be a party for whoever was buying those boots, if he stayed within the fire code, wouldn't that be all the rules that were-
All he needs is one pair of boots.
Yeah, he sells one pair of boots and a wedding happens to break out.
Gets ten thousand dollars, he'll go buy another pair.
Yep, and so-
I like your attitude.
My, my, the whole conversation I got was that the retail is a lower threshold of number of people. And so, as long as he stayed below that and sold expensive boots, then the city wouldn't care if there was a lot of people attending the purchase of those boots, so.
I'm not sure you're gonna sell a lot of ten thousand dollar pair of boots.
That's beside the point.
Councilman Phil might buy some.
That's the point.
Hello, council, Scotty Harvell, post adjutant for Cedar City American Legion Post Forty-Four Seventy-four. Just wanna remind you that we have a Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving Day. It's gonna be from twelve to five. It's free for all veterans and anyone who wants to, it's at the First Baptist Church. And if you have any questions, just let me know or talk to Scott and ask that information. And I thank you for everything that the staff and the council does for our veterans in Iron County. Thank you.
Thank you, Scotty.
Thank you, sir. You're, no, you're gonna be on the agenda unless you've got something other than what's on the agenda. You're coming up next. Well, not next, second, second next. I know, past your bedtime. Okay, no more? We're there. Thank you. We'll start the agenda. Item number one, public hearing to consider modification of the Cedar City ordinance twenty-six dash nine, no, four, dash nine, removing the requirements of fencing around private pools when using compliant locking pool covers.
So, we've had an ordinance on the books for quite a while requiring fencing around a pool, backyard pool. That fencing would have to have a self-latching gate to safety, keep the kids that can't swim out of the pool. The states change their requirements and they allow for these types of covers to be installed on the pool. No fencing required, so that's the proposal is to bring our ordinance into compliance with what the state allows.
So, are there weight-bearing covers, I'm assuming, with the locks on them?
I don't know a lot of information about the covers, council member.
My question would be, and I'm not sure how we do it with the fence either, but how do we, how do we enforce this? How do we know that a person has put a fence up or not?
We do it at building permit.
At the time of the-
At the time they pull a building permit to put the pool in.
Okay.
We go down the list and it says you got a-
And so, we'd have the same situation if it was a cover.
You got a fence and they say yes or no, and then we tell them about the fencing requirement.
And we'd do a similar thing if they decided to cover, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I had a, I had a neighbor of mine that has a little small, like, almost a little duck pond in his house, and he had no fence around his yard, and my other neighbor's little two-year-old, in a matter of a blink, walked across there and ended up face down in that pond. And is this something that we have to agree to? Or can we say there still needs to be some type of fence in the backyard or something? I'm not overly huge fan of just having, just because you cover, if the cover's on, it only took this little boy about thirty seconds when the parents weren't looking and he was over there and that happened.
But was it a pool or was it-
No, it was just a, kinda like a little water feature.
Oh, well, see, we don't require that.
But now, they since put a fence up, they since put a fence, but you take a pool and maybe somebody's not right there that, you know, haven't put the cover on it. If this doesn't have to be followed by the state, I don't know if I agree with-
Hot tubs.
Having the backyard open.
So, the state, the state has certain standards that they require us to follow. And if we don't follow them, there's a stick behind it. The state has certain fields of the law where they say that they control. One that pops to mind is years ago, there was a bunch of municipalities trying to pass gun control legislation. And the state stepped in and said, this is the state of Utah policy. It's not up for municipal debate. We're gonna control this whole field. So, there's some definite limits on the municipal authority in some of these areas. This one, I don't see that same level of dominance by the state of Utah. And I don't, I don't know what they would hit us with as a sanction if we chose to go a different route on this particular matter.
I mean, I feel like we're being more restrictive on this, which the state, I mean, are we allowed to be more restrictive on something than, as long as we hit minimum?
If you tried to do gun control, the state would come and slap us down.
Yeah.
If you tried to control-
Fences around pools?
Probably not.
Okay.
There's a whole bunch of things the states asserted themselves in the land use area in the, in the last couple of years. They've required us to do housing plans. They've required us to do a whole bunch of hoops that we have to jump through, or they've told us flat out, we'll withhold your C-road money.
Yeah.
This isn't in that list. This simply is a-
Well, Phil, the reason I ask about the weight bearing is, like, our neighbor, I have a neighbor that has a bubble rollout one that locks.
Yeah.
And so, if it's closed, a kid can't get in unless they have access to the lock. If they're flat ones and they're load-bearing, you know, then, then they can't sink and fall through and drown. That's, that's the reason that I asked the question.
So, the ATSM F-one-three-four-six is a pool cover that it's a safety cover, meets specific standards, prevents children and pets from drowning. These covers are designed to support five hundred pounds, and they prevent objects from passing through. They're rated for five hundred pounds.
Yeah.
Somebody's gotta be there every minute.
Right there.
No, not through lock, at the shed.
Powered it.
Yeah, but it's a public hearing.
Good evening, Tom Jett. So, this item came to the planning-
I guess since we're starting a public hearing, this is a public hearing. So, now I open the public hearing and we'll first recognize Tom.
Thank you. Tom Jett, good evening. So, this came to planning commission a couple of weeks ago, and I'm the one who said we should pass it because our legal counsel said, hey, we really don't have a choice, even though I think our state legislature makes, made a mistake here. I, and although that is electric, and I'm not a person for more rules, but there's a lot of people, a lot of young people drowned and old people drowned every year because of swimming pools and not being able. One of the problems with this, and I did some investigation on this, one of the problems, yes, you could walk on it. That's if you close it. If you leave it open all the time-
That's what he's saying.
Then it's a moot point. And, and so, again, I think the legislature did us dirty.
Yeah, because the fence is there all the time.
Yeah, and, and so, so, and I made that comment. I don't like it. I think they overstepped their bounds. But, you know, that's the only reason we support it, because there's a lot of trepidation within the planning commission also with regard to this. And again, I'm not for more government rules. I'm just, it's not all it cracks up to be. But if we don't have a choice, we don't have a choice.
No, you make a good point, though. I mean, if you have a cover, are you, in the middle of the summer, are you gonna cover it every single night and lock it up every, probably not.
Every afternoon and, yeah, and, and we don't, we have-
And if you're fenced and it's your grandchildren, then that's one thing. But if it's my grandchildren that drowned in your pool, I think you should have a fence.
Yeah.
But if Utah state law says we have no choice, that's why we said, well, then, I guess our hands-
But I don't think they're quite, I don't think, I agree with, I mean, I don't know, but I would agree with what Mr. Bittman said. I don't know if this is one of those things that they're gonna come back and say, nope, you guys can't be more restrictive than us. We don't know that, but-
So, that was just my two cents worth. Thank you.
Ken, you had something on the thing.
Yeah, the comment I wanted to make on this is, you know, I've, I've seen one of these covers in operation. It's a very simple matter of pushing the button. The thing moves over. It locks itself down. You can walk all over it. I think it provides far more safety than a fence and a gate provides because it's easy to get over a fence.
I could scale up the whole backstop when I was five years old and basically-
Yeah, so, I think that we certainly want to allow these or encourage these. If, if the best way to get it is to, so you don't have to put in a fence, I think we've improved safety by having this and not a fence. Versus not having this and having a fence. That would, that would just be my, my opinion.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this issue? This, we are in a public hearing. Seeing no one will, come back to you.
I'll go on action.
Yep, put it on action, please.
Okay, Mr. Holyoke. Item number two, consider waiving a portion of a solid waste bill for Tink Holyoke. Thomas.
You know, I'm Tink Holyoke. I'm the oldest person in this room. I know that, so, anyway, I, I've got a little bit of a problem. And I, I, I looked at my power bill last month. I thought, my, hell, that's more than my, my electrical bill. I mean, my city bill is higher than my electrical bill. I got looking at it. But anyway, make a long story short, I've been paying for four garbage cans for ten years.
At your residence?
For ten years.
At your residence?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's nineteen-hundred-and-twenty dollars that I've paid in the last ten years. It's not the, the money's not what bothers me. What bothers me is it, is the idea. It's like, if I go in the bank to make a deposit, I get arrested for holding up the bank, you know, that type of thing. But I, I, I had a problem with the garbage collector that used to deliver or come and pick up my garbage, but anyway. He was a big guy from Texas.
Speaking to the mic, Tink, sorry.
He was a big guy from Texas. And one morning, I missed the garbage on my side of the street. So, I took, I went over to the, across the street and waited for him to come back down. And he says, you can't do that. I says, why can't I? He says, that's double dipping. I says, I missed it on that side of their street and I can't bring it over here. And he says, no. He said, that's double dipping. He said, that's like going to your, your parts store and buying one, one spark plug, and they charge you for ten, therefore, a box of eight. But anyway, I know that's where this problem came from because I talked to Paul about this. And it says, it says, Tink's got four garbage cans out again. How in the heck do you put out four garbage cans if you only got two? That's it. But how many people, how many residents in town pay for four garbage cans?
Well, I don't. I check my bill every month, but, so you do have two?
I have two.
And you've always had two during this period of concern, correct?
Yeah.
So, I guess the question is, from our records, and I read it, what's in our packet, how did we get to the point where you were recorded having four?
Well, I just looked at my power bill and it said garbage, and so I thought, it's thirty-two dollars. And so, I called and talked to the city, and they says, that's, you pay eight dollars a piece for your garbage cans, and you got four garbage cans. And I says, no, I don't. And, but anyway, but this guy, this, this guy, he, he rubbed me wrong. I guess I rubbed him wrong, you know. But I said, he's, I said, he's picture in the obituary one time. I thought, hell, I won't miss him. But-
Okay, so one question that I have, I mean, I think we get, so what it sounds like is, at some point, one of our drivers or whoever was collecting the trash reported back to the city accounting, hey, he has four trash cans, whether or not that was true or not at the time. We, we went ahead and added the two extra cans to his bill. So, he's claiming they've been on there since 2015, but our records can only go back to three years. Is that right?
Yeah, we told him we'd refund him to three years because that's what we can see. I'm not, I don't know when the four cans went on. I can see the note in his utility account. The note reads-
From 2015?
It's dated in 2015, and it says, four cans out for trash several times. That's what, that's what the note says.
So, Mr. Holyoke, what, how are you under the impression that you've been charged since 2015? Do you have record of all the bills going back that far?
Well, I called the city and they told me. She said, you've been, you've been charged for four garbage cans for the last ten years. So, from 2015 to 2025.
We can show, we can show we've collected bills for four garbage cans for three years. That's as far back as our accounting software goes. We can see this note in 2015. I don't know if that's when it was adjusted to four cans or not, but I know I can see it for three years.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking. So, that's really where we're at.
So, that's where staff said, hey, we'll go to three years because we see we billed you that for three years. We'll refund you that, and if you want to argue for more, Wednesday night, five-thirty, come on down.
But we don't actually know when they were put on. We have no way of actually knowing.
I don't.
Well, you know-
Or that they ever were put on.
Except there was a note about it in 2015.
Correct.
Twenty-fifteen, four garbage cans since 2015. That's, but anyway, it's the idea. It's not the money that bothers me. It's the idea. That big guy from Texas who used to rub me wrong, and I guess he rubbed me wrong, but, but anyway.
Ryan?
Yeah.
I have our public works director speak real quick. He's right behind you.
He needs to speak to us.
So, a couple of years ago, what we did is we put a policy in place if-
Give us your name.
Ryan Marshall, Public Works Director. If a driver goes by and they see a different amount of cans out in front than what they usually pick up, what they do now is they call to our secretary at Public Works. She calls down to the city office. They look it up to see how many cans they're paying for. If it's one, that, that's what they do. If, if they've got two cans out there and they're only paying for one, then we contact them and add that to their bill before we, just add that on there. But we contact the homeowners before we do that, and they have to know that that's going back on their bill.
But don't most of the cans have addresses on them?
No, you have to write your own address on them.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, we don't write the addresses on, they write them on themselves.
But my thing is, how would we, how does a person get a trash can that says Cedar City Corporation unless we're the ones that give it to them?
We could buy extra cans.
They can-
From the city?
So, we've constantly got neighbors who are missing cans. They, when they move, they take their cans with them, and then they've got one there, and so they start putting them both out.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of different situations where we have multiple.
That's why we have to buy thousands of cans a year.
So, there's no way, I mean, our records only go back to the three years unless he has the physical, the physical statement showing the thirty-two dollars. There's no other way for us to prove when this was put on there.
Cedar City doesn't have record of when it was put on, and our billing records only go back to three years.
Well, let me just say one thing first. If you're moving your can to the other side of the street because you missed the pickup, you're not double, you're not double dipping. You're not double dipping. I, I have a neighbor that does that to my street quite frequently and right next to mine.
Ryan, do we have any kind of a policy? Is that a thing?
They're already paying for that pickup.
No, I agree. That's why I'm saying, we don't penalize, I mean, a driver wouldn't deny somebody picking it up if they just walked it across the street, would they?
But some people would do it, and then see them turn around and hurry and fill them up again with their rubbish and.
Oh, no.
Yeah, the problem with that is, is if they moved to the other side, then it's that situation where the driver goes by and says, well, that other side usually only has one can out, now there's two, so then they call in to question whether.
It's the neighbor's can or.
They don't know where that can is coming from, and that's kind of where they, they try.
So, but if a person.
Do they do that?
A lot more lax on that. If they call in and say, I missed it, we'll send them back.
Ryan, do they, do they do that the time they stop in front of my house, or they then say, oh, there's two there now, so I gotta call the city offices, and I'll leave the truck parked here while I went here from the city, and then the city's gonna contact?
Now, most of what I did is I'll definitely both, and then.
And then they report it. That's what I would think we should.
So, do you have a neighbor that would sneak two over to your side of the street every time?
Well, you know, I, hell, I'll be, I'm, I'm gonna be 84 years old next month, I can't work hard enough to fill one garbage can.
Okay, so I think, so what, what the driver was claiming is that, yeah, he was double dipping. It's not that he had four trash cans, it's that he would dump them twice, he would dump on his side, he'd hurry to refill them, and so maybe that's what the driver was alluding to, is that.
There's only some bad blood, it was just some bad blood.
Okay.
My, my neighbor, my neighbor next door to me, his driveway meets my, his driveways meets my driveway inside, so if, if he put out, I put, I put my two garbage cans out and he put his, his two garbage cans out, looks like he got four garbage cans, but if I had them on my property, but then his, he'd begin, wouldn't be getting any, so. But it just, it's just the idea that bothers me, you know, that this gone on for 10 years, that I've been paying for 10, for, for garbage cans and only had two.
But we don't know for certain if you have been, we, you're assuming you have been.
Well, I, I had, when Jeff Hunter was, was over this, I, I had a garbage can, it was, the lid was broken, one of the old round ones.
Yeah.
And Jeff was gonna bring me another garb, another garbage can, he says, I'll come and pick that up and we'll throw it away. I says, Jeff, could I possibly keep that one, so I can put it in my backyard, so I can put my grass in it? Because when I put my, if I put that out, for instance, with the grass in it, I won't put the other two, I'll just bring the other one out. All of it would put out is two. But, but it, it just, but it all stems back to this dang guy that was the garbage director, guy, I think he's the one, the culprit over the thing, so.
Well.
So, if, if you, well, I'm inclined to say, hey, we're sorry, will you take the three years that they've offered, unless you bring statements that show that you were charged for 10 years, we can revisit it and then move forward.
Well, but you go, you, you look on your records, because she showed me that it was 2015 when they, they started charging me for four of them.
That was only a memo on your account, it wasn't invoices, because I think they did, they get so many, they destroy them every so many years. So, they don't, the city doesn't have record beyond three years, other than a memo in your account, which is a permanent file, not a, a monthly file, so that.
Yeah, I don't know if I'll have, go back that far, you know, but I, but anyway.
But that's just the hard thing at this point, is there's no concrete proof that the bill was, that you were actually charged for. There is the note, so it's like, I mean, yes, it would, it probably was, but when it comes to giving a refund, that we don't know if you were ever charged.
You've been, you've been charged for four garbage cans since, for 10 years.
Okay, well.
But she may have said that the, the four was added in a note in 2015, but I don't know if the, the city doesn't have record, she wouldn't have known that, anyway, I, we would just need data in order to make a decision, or I'm inclined to say, hey, we're sorry that you had to deal with this, and bless his soul, you don't have to deal with him anymore, and give you the three years, you know, and make sure the city updates their two year, their two can deal, unless you're down to one now.
Well, I, I told Paul this, you know, I appreciate the, the fact that the police department saved my wife's life eleven months ago.
I remember that.
And anyway, I appreciate it. I told Paul, I, I can live with that for, for the three, for three years, you know, but then I thought, I thought about it, you know, that, that just makes me feel like I was the one that was at fault, which I wasn't, because I didn't ever have four garbage cans, never have, so.
Yeah, and I don't think anyone is accusing you of being at fault. It's just from our perspective, we're saying we don't know beyond that three years.
Yeah, when we're dealing with the public's money, it's hard. I mean, you know, from a, from a business owner's standpoint, if, if this was a business transaction in private money, I think most of us up here would just take the benefit of the doubt, but when it's public's money, we have to have some kind of concrete proof to be able to give public's money back to somebody without proof that they spent it.
So, if I can go back 10 years and find a bill that shows $32?
If you go through, if you go through that effort, then I think that it'd probably be in your favor if you want to, or you can say, hey, let's chalk this up to, you know, whatever it may be.
I mean, I would feel that way, I don't know.
Yeah, that's, I would too. I mean, if you're gonna go through the effort to.
I think I can find that.
If you found a bill from five years ago or six years ago, we'll go back as far as that bill is.
Okay.
That's how I feel.
Or you can save yourself some time and take what we've offered, and we'll say we're sorry, and we can move on.
Yeah, it's $576 if we do the three years, $1,920 if you go the full 10.
Right, right.
He was offered the, the three months and wanted you to give.
He was offered $560.
Give me $560.
I guess, one simple question, we have lowered it to two cans already, correct? This is not an ongoing thing?
It's a two.
It's a two?
But you know, it's too bad that you guys on, on, somehow don't make a note on, it just says landfill, $32. Well, and I, and I thought, when I see my power bill, I thought, wow, that's terrible. I mean, my, my water bill, I thought, that's terrible, but, so that's when I called, but I, I, I think I can find that.
All right, well, we'll put this on the agenda for next week.
Okay.
No, two weeks. No, two weeks. Excuse me. Don't give it to us.
We're on action next week.
Two weeks.
They can decide what they're gonna do. If you find something, good luck.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
I don't have stuff back 10, I don't have my water bill back 10 years.
Well, I'm good.
Well, maybe Tink does. You're, you're a businessman, maybe you do.
So am I, businessman.
I keep receipts for as long as I can. My, my cousin told me, he says, he said, I just, I pay the bill and throw it away.
Yeah.
And, but, but I, I think I can find you.
All right.
Okay.
Bring it on down.
Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three, consider resolution amending the consolidated fee schedule for the arena fees. And we're gonna have four or five of these here, so shall I read them all at once and talk about them all at once?
No, they're all different things.
Talk about it one at a time. They're all different.
Ken Nielsen with Leisure Services, the mayor is absolutely correct. So, the next few are in relation to the new addition getting completed out to the arenas. So, those all relate to that. Scott Christensen's here, who's, who's all, all knowing of all those things out there. I just wanted to say that this, all these items, we took to our arena committee a few days ago, and they have all approved them. So, as you, as you go through these, just realize that our committee over that facility is in agreement with these, so.
And, and I just wanna make a comment on that committee, we actually compared it to other arenas, and we're still lower, or at least in line with most other arenas, and most of the time it was lower.
Are you on that committee?
Yeah, so we're, we're in the market, I mean.
Demand is high, raise the rate.
So, so that's.
Exceed supply.
I, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that that went through our committee, and so, these are just to present to you folks, so. If you have any questions, Scott's more than knowledgeable.
I, I just have a general question. How come we don't do the consolidated fee schedule when we approve our fiscal budget in July?
We do. This matter's brought before you because we just added a facility, and these fees relate to the added building.
The add-on to the barn.
Will this, will this be done in January, this building?
It's supposed to be done in December.
They've got, they've got the skin on, right, Scott? The, the metal's on the outside of the building?
The metal's on the outside, yes.
Yeah, they're moving.
Yes, Councilman Phelps, so the only reason we're here with the fees is because we have a new rentable space. So, it wasn't, there's not a fee for it.
We've increased the offering.
So, I was confused, because in our packet, there was a fee schedule, and it was, there was no deletions or changes or reds, I didn't know what we were proposing, and then we got this one. So, we are looking at the one that has the red crossed out information on it. That's what we're looking at to consider.
Look at the one that's the exhibit to the resolution, that has the red crossouts. Keep scrolling down, Kent.
He was on it a second.
Yeah.
There you go.
Right there.
Okay, it was just confusing. Okay, thank you.
If you look at the numbers, they're the same. This one just shows the changes in red, the other one shows.
Well, that's what I wanted to know, because it was hard to tell what was being proposed to be changed.
Yeah, it doesn't show what's new, what wasn't.
Randall suggested we give you the ones that we doctored, so you can see the changes.
He's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Beautiful.
So, is anybody gonna talk about them?
Scott Christensen, arena manager. Do you have any questions? What do you?
Okay, so, I do, I have a few questions. So, when we're saying indoor only, northwest, east entrances only, that's referring to essentially the old part of the building. That's if somebody wants to take what was there and just that part, and they don't want the new warm-up area, correct?
Correct.
We're kind of referring to them as indoor only and warm-up.
Yeah.
Right? So, my only, then my only other question would be, if we go down to the cleaning damage deposit, I see that that amount went up, and I don't have a problem with that necessarily, but is, is that if they rent just the indoor, or the indoor and the warm-up? What if they rent just the warm-up and not the other one?
Doesn't matter what they rent, anything they rent, they'll have a, a deposit they'll have to pay. Right now, they pay a $500 one, no matter what they rent.
Okay.
Is that deposit deducted then from, if, like, for example, if it is a ticketed event, do they get that deposit back, or is that just deducted from what they pay?
No, no, it's returned to them.
Okay, it's just a.
We ask for a check that we can just give right back to them.
Okay.
If they clean up.
They couldn't just pay you the difference? They, if they've already cut you one check, they couldn't just pay you?
Well, that really doesn't matter, that's their account.
I just want a, a clarity also, if it is a ticketed event, no matter what they're using, $1,000 a day or $2,000 a day, the parking, the warm-up only, that's not added on top of that? If they, if they have a ticketed event and they're there for the indoor and warm-up outdoor, they pay $2,000 a day?
If they rent both the facilities, yeah.
But they don't pay $400 in addition to that for the parking lot?
No.
Okay. I still feel a clarity on.
Just like if our carnival comes in, and they rent just the parking lot?
Okay, got it.
Or if something else.
Okay. Um, okay. I just, I've had, I've had a few residents reach out to me concerned about our fees at the arenas, the arena, and I just want to make sure that we're not pricing ourselves out, but you're telling me that we're well within the reason of what we're doing. I certainly don't want to run people out of there, because it's a going entity, and you've done a great job getting events in there, so congratulations for that. I just want to make sure we don't, we don't kill the goose that laid the golden egg.
I, I.
Well, he has his calendar filled up for most of the year, so that's indicative of, of.
Right, but we haven't got these new prices into effect yet.
No, I don't, I don't think there's anybody that's renting it for 2026 that didn't know that the price was going up.
Okay.
I confirmed that with the new additions that we were doing, and we are very competitive with our prices. Any facility that's similar to ours, you know, we're, we're, we're real competitive. We, we're, 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 we'll probably need to look at this again down the road somewhere.
Sure.
I, I have one last question. I'm just gonna take an event, and I'm not picking this one over another one, but I'm just trying to understand one thing. So, for example, let's say the pumpkin festival, the Chamber of Commerce Pumpkin Festival. So, their new rate would be, if they're taking just the old part of the building, would be the $1,000 for the whole day, because they're a ticketed event, because.
But that's what it was previously, I think.
But that's what I'm asking, is where would they, I don't see a previous, we're, we're looking at the changes, I don't see where would they have landed before.
They would have been the same place, but, but they took off the weekend rate. It's no longer a weekend rate, that's what you pay every day. Three, 350 a day? And it's always been $1,000 a day, right?
For a ticketed.
For a ticketed event.
Yeah, no matter, no matter what day of the week it is.
Correct.
For a ticketed event.
Okay. I just, okay.
You're deleting all of the weekend costs, you're just saying, if you have a full day rental, this is what it is. Doesn't matter if it's Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or Saturday.
If you keep scrolling down, there's an hour rental.
Yeah, an hourly rental.
Right now, the policy is we, we'll rent it by the hour for weekdays. Weekends, we do not, it's only by the day.
Okay.
So, you can't come in on a Saturday and rent it for a couple hours.
Yeah, because you could be turning someone away that wants it for the whole day.
Right.
And is that day midnight to midnight, or is it when you come to when you leave? Is it 24-hour period?
It's from when we open in the arena in the morning to 8 o'clock, until, they can go till midnight, but they have to be out of there by midnight.
Correct.
So, if you had an event that took just the afternoon of one day and the morning of the next, you'd be two days.
Yeah.
Even though you're less than 24 hours total, you'd be two days.
Yeah, that's pretty much how it is now, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question on the, with the new building coming in, how's your, how did that hamper the parking? Because the other day I went by there on a, on an event, and there was people parking all over the road. There was probably 50 cars that weren't even able to get up there.
The, the parking.
Do we, do we need to look at expanding that maybe north?
We'd love to. We, we would love to do that. It's the Livestock Association that owns that property.
I know it is.
We'd love to do something because we do need to look at the parking. There's, there's no question about it. The addition has not, will not hurt us. As soon as this is completed, it, it won't hurt our parking. We'll have the same amount of parking we had before, because if you remember, the white fence was out there.
Yeah.
It was an outside warm-up.
About where, where the addition goes to now. There won't be that there now. It'll be a road that comes right through there. So, uh, there'll be about as parking as what there was before.
I wish we could get a little more paved parking out there. I realize that in some cases it doesn't make sense with the trailers and things, but still find a way to get some more.
Then I'd like to see that, that east side, uh, kind of where the road come in now.
Yep.
I don't like the big turn. I wish it would have been square and on over to the other, but, but maybe down the road.
Yeah.
Uh, if you do scroll down, uh, I think there's another page there. I want to make sure we're, that you guys are aware of that. Uh, the family, the memberships were, right now, they have to pay for their lights. Uh, when they come in there, if it's after dark, they have to put, we have a coin machine they have to put coins into. And it's been a real sore spot for a lot of people. They don't have to, at other facilities, you know, pickleball courts, for example, I get thrown all that in there all the time. And so we looked at it, and if we raise the price, which we are still very, very reasonable with other facilities, to those that you see there, that actually will bring us in more money than what the quarter, the quarters are. Uh, what they'll be is on a timer, I'm not timer, but a, they will have a timer on a sensor. So when they ride in, the two rolls will come on like it does now. Uh, bells will, uh, lights will come on, and then when they ride out, after a 10-minute time with no movement in there, they'll go off. And so that's what I had at my other two facilities I operated. Uh, I think it's, I think it's a lot better. It's a lot better for our people using it. Uh, it's also better when people come in to use the restroom if they're there for an event. Lights come on, they don't walk into things, things like that. So, uh, I, but it, but it brings us in about double what we are on the coins for what, if we stay with members that we've got now. So I wanted to...
They just roll up in the dark, so they don't want to put more quarters in it.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh...
Yeah, that makes sense. I think it makes sense. Um, can you tell me on the banquet room, um, how does this, those costs relate to using a room in, like, in festival hall? Is it similar? I'm not talking the theater. I'm just talking festival hall.
Sim- similar, yeah. They're, uh, I called them and got theirs, what they were doing. And it, it's very similar.
Okay.
What they were doing there. Probably a knock. Theirs was, theirs was some odd numbers, and so, you know, it was...
I know. Jason likes odd numbers.
So is the banquet room, is that an additional charge? If you have an event, you've rented the whole facility, does that include the banquet room, or is that an extra in addition to?
Banquet room is, is extra on every single thing. So if you rent the whole facility, you'd have to rent the banquet room with the arenas, whatever you did there.
If you wanted the banquet room?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that is in addition to the arena rental?
Yes.
No, wait. I mean, if I, if I just want to have a banquet, I want to have the Lincoln Day dinner there and not use the arena.
You can get...
I have, oh, I can just rent the banquet room?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
If you rent the indoor, it does not come with the banquet room. You have to rent the banquet room.
You know, I understand that.
You have to pay extra. Do we, we don't charge for tables and chairs at the Heritage Center, though, do we?
I, I really don't know.
These tables and chairs are owned by someone else, aren't they?
No, they, well, they were bought by the, uh, Heritage, Livestock's, uh, the Heritage, but they donated them to the city, to the arena.
I just know, I mean, I've rented rooms over there and we don't charge to, that's included in the room rental.
You mean at festival hall?
Festival hall.
Yeah. Well, I know in the past, at the Pumpkin Festival, we, we've never paid separate for the tables and chairs that we've used if we're paying the $1,000 a day fee. Are you saying that's going to change?
No, it's, it's, you have paid for them.
And that's in the $1,000 event?
No, if, I hate to say it, but you've never paid the $1,000. You've always just...
Well, I don't know what they pay. I'm not a member of the chamber. I just help with it.
They pay the 350. They pay the 350, and then they pay for the, the tables and chairs that they use.
Okay. Well, then that's fair, but...
I didn't even know they were a ticketed event. I didn't know they charged to go into there. So I, I thought it was just for a pumpkin they were paying for.
Well, that...
Well, that, that is what they're paying for.
That is what they're, they're paying $5. So I guess you, I don't know if that counts as a ticketed event or not.
Yeah.
We have to buy the pumpkins, and they give the pumpkins away. So that is what the person's pretty much paying for.
Yeah.
That is. But...
Yes.
$1,000 boot.
Okay.
And then there is one more thing that I would like to bring up on this is, I'm talking with all the other facilities that I've, I've, I've contacted. Every, every single one of them has, uh, an alcohol thing, which if you have, uh, alcohol there, which they can get a permit and do, if they sell it, they pay 20 to 30% commission on that alcohol that's sold at their facilities. If it's a private party and they have alcohol there, they pay double the rent. And I didn't know about this when I presented it to my committee, but I thought, hmm, that's something I, I wish I would have known about prior to this. Uh, every, every one of them, every one of the facilities is...
You're talking about the other arenas?
Mm-hmm.
Because that's not the case in festival hall?
No, no, not here in, in here, in Cedar. This is the arenas. This is St. George, uh, Spanish Fork, Vernal, South Jordan, the Black Hawk.
If they sell it?
If they sell it, they pay a 20 to 30% gross, a percentage on the gross.
To the facility.
To the facility.
Okay.
If they have a private party and they don't sell it, then they pay double the rent.
A drunk fest costs more because they break more stuff.
So if you rent the banquet room, and you want to have wine, you're going to say they would charge double for the banquet room?
Mm-hmm.
Holy crap. That's high. That's high.
So I just wanted to bring that up, uh, because if you got alcohol there, you know, you have potential for, for problems. And so I don't know if they do that to detour it, to, to, uh, deter, yeah, uh, people, or if they do it because of the issues they might have, those kind of things. But, uh, I just, we just, uh, I just threw that out there because we thought we should, that, uh, you guys can consider that, think about that, whether you think it's something we should have at our facility or not.
Well, you're going to have people that are going to use your banquet room. They're going to ask for alcohol.
No question.
They are.
What if we did a higher deposit amount for alcohol events?
Well, I don't even care if you charge a little bit, but I think double is way too high. I won't support that.
I mean, I agree. The thing is, you know, the, the trouble or whatever, the things that could happen. So what if we just did a higher deposit on alcohol events? That way, you, you have alcohol, and you don't cause a problem. You get your deposit right back.
But I think he's saying that if he, if you do charge far as 30% on the gross, not 30% on his net.
On the gross, if it sells.
Sells $10 for the alcohol, we get $3.
So a private party is different because it's not taking from the concessionaire because they're not selling.
Correct.
And so I agree on the sales. It's, we, we've a contract with the concessionaire to get a certain percentage of their sales, and it's no different, other than maybe the percentage. A private team.
If it's 10%, now maybe it goes to 20 or 25%. I don't know.
So maybe what I should do is, uh, visit with our committee on our next meeting. And then when you redo the fees going into the next year, if there's something we want to present, we present it at that time.
Yeah, but you, you very likely, the, I, I don't know who, but if you're opening this banquet room in January, you might have a banquet in April that wants to serve wine.
So it'll just be what it is right there on that paper.
All right. And all these fees go into effect January 1?
Immediately.
That's what we're asking for, yes. I believe.
When's the arena going to be done?
December 13th, they say, but I...
Is that a Friday?
I doubt it. I, I...
No, it's a Saturday. It's reached across America.
I doubt it'll make it, but hopefully it will.
Yeah, it's a Saturday.
It's looking good. Oh, they've got, they've got a lot of things done the last little bit. It's, they got cement poured. They've got the block sitting there to pour the, to put a little block up for the wash rack and metal on the inside walls and sheeting. They got the frame, the banquet room and bathroom's all framed, plugged, doing electrical work right now.
I mean, this includes membership dates, and it says right here, membership date's January 1, so I think we just make it effective January 1.
Well, this helps. Thank you. Thank you for your...
Yep.
I ju- I just want to mention, as you guys are thinking about this, so it, it gives him the ability to actually have four events there at the same time if it works out, right? Somebody can go with the room, somebody can go with the warm-up, somebody can go indoor, and somebody can go outdoor.
Yeah.
So it really opens up his ability to, uh, schedule and to have various events on the same time. So it's, it's, it'll be really nice for him.
Well, this stage, this stage rental, is this something that, isn't the stage kind of built into the banquet room? Or is this something that would require staff to come and set up?
It's one the city has that they set up at other events.
Yeah, we've actually asked, uh, asked for money for the, we don't have a stage. So it's in some, uh, we've asked money from the county to the, uh, transit, the restaurant tax.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
For money to purchase a stage, so we can have a stage in there. I think it'll be required, you know, in high demand.
Okay, that makes sense then. I just, okay. Thank you.
What do you like? Consent or action?
You gotta go action. It's a resolution, so we have to do a roll call.
Okay, so far, it's all action.
It's all action. Item number four.
Donation?
Cross Hollow Arena donation letter.
I think I'll, Robert would like to take, talk about this would be great.
So we're looking for approximately $40,000 more dollars to get everything complete. And kind of an incentive that we talked about was giving, uh, if someone was willing to give $20,000, to let them put their name on the, on the banquet room, like we've, like the Diamond Z, right, is, is branded. Um, some major, major donors that have already contributed out there have agreed that, that they don't want the, the branding of that. Yes, and they're willing to give that up if we can get someone to give a donor. If we have more than one that's willing to give that amount, then we, you know, we would do some type of a bid offer. Whoever gave the most would, would get the, you know, get to put their brand, which we'll talk about later, or their logo, um, in that, in that...
Where would you, are you talking, this is the inside of the room itself?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not on the outside of the building?
How long would that last for?
Because that's a very...
$20,000 seems awfully low to name something.
Very low to put your name on something.
Right. We're just trying to get some money to finish it up.
Would, would, would you consider a donor wall recognizing
Yeah.
your generous support of the following?
Yeah.
More, more people instead of naming rights?
No, I, I'm certain that we're open to whatever we can do to get some money to finish it up.
I mean, $40,000 is a lot, but it's not a lot, you know what I mean? For a naming right.
And when you say we, I guess, is this that...
Usually that's $100,000 or more.
Yeah, we went, we went over this in the committee while, this letter's been floating around for several months now, so...
Who's it signed by? Go down. Is it just...
It's the city. Yeah.
It's going to be signed by me, but it was, uh, originally Rust, Rusty Aiken's kind of been the one out spearheading, uh, trying to get, raise the money, and I think Robert's called quite a few people, things like that. So they just wanted to have something that could present to somebody to kind of show them what, and hand them a letter instead of just not have anything...
And, and I, I do like the idea of a donor wall because it's a little bit safer at this point in the game.
Yeah.
If people want to give, then...
If they give $500, they gotta have their name on there.
And just have bigger print for larger donors and go down to the small print, just like we do with most other things, so...
Like they do at the hospital and everywhere else.
So I, I actually like that approach, uh, having a donor wall for that room, but...
I think that's good.
Ken Nelson with Leisure Services. So I'm in favor of the donor wall also because we have the Livestock Association. We have Rusty. We have individuals that have already donated, and we'd like to just recognize all of them.
Yeah.
And just have, uh, that inside on a nice, and if somebody continues to donate, then we just add them to the wall.
Well, and I think there's also a, a bit of a branding issue. I know we're going to come to it in just a minute, but, I mean, the community knows that entire complex as a Diamond Z arena. And I guess now we got to figure out how we work that out with this new addition.
And that's a, that's the, one of the topics.
I know. I'm waiting anxiously.
And Diamond Z gave us a significant amount of money when that was originally built.
Yeah.
That's the, the purpose for that. It wasn't $20,000.
Well, is there a way to rework this letter to kind of...
Yeah, I think we'll take that forward and rework it to make it more of a donor wall kind of subject.
Yeah, and just say for you, a level of this, or a level of this.
Rusty just wanted something that he could take to his folks that he knows, that knows that this, it's not just him. It's the city that's pursuing this. Thank you.
I'd rewrite it.
Hey, we'll put that on action so we can see what you come up with in a week. Item number five, consider resolution approving the concept of placing a sheepherder's monument in front of the Cross Hollow Event Center.
So, oh, I'm sorry. I should have capitalized, uh, the P in placement there on the start of the sentence. My, my bad. Within the last year, the council's approved an ordinance talking about placing monuments and such. And the basic structure of that ordinance is if somebody wants to place a statue or a monument or something, we come to the council and say, this is the concept. Is it okay if we pursue it? And we get a thumbs up or a thumbs down from the council. If we get a thumbs up from the council, the council's not involved anymore. It goes to the mayor and the guys that run the facility, or whoever the mayor designates, to, to make sure we follow through, get, get something similar to the size and scope of what was presented and approved by the council, get the final placement, and all that, all the details worked out. So what we're here for tonight is, if you scroll down a little bit, Kent. We had some, some folks, Commissioner Robinson with the County Commission, and, and some of the folks with the Livestock and Heritage Festival. They were out of town, and they noticed this really cool monument to sheepherders. Uh, and basically, it's in a place where, uh, in town to recognize the, the agricultural heritage. The monument has these sheep, and then I think if you scroll down some more, there's a picture of the dog and the guy with the horse.
Mm-hmm.
He's driving the sheep, and the dog's biting him. So they want to do something similar to this, and their idea is to place it in front of, uh, the arena, the Cross Hollow Arena, on the roadside of the fence, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Um, so it's actually, I talked to Donna Christensen this afternoon, and one of the concepts they may have is to put it in that. There's a, a 10-foot-wide livestock easement that runs down through there to drive livestock that has been, um, not used a lot, uh, to drive livestock.
Weeds, weeds grow really well there.
If they do, they might confuse the sheep.
It's still there in favor of the Livestock Association, so, uh, the, the folks that are pitching this monument know they have to go get, uh, permission if that's where it ends up being, is in that right-of-way. And I've told them I'd help them do that.
So is the Livestock Association pushing for this as well?
I haven't heard from the Livestock Association. I've talked to Donna, and I've talked to Commissioner Robinson.
Okay. Because, I mean, if they're the ones pushing it, then it, it changes, well, because they donated a bunch of that land that the current arena sits on, right?
Sure.
Um, so to me, that, that's a different story.
Maybe that's just one of the things, we, somebody reach out to them and say, how would you feel about this?
Well, Donna's talked to them, and, and, and what she told me today is they don't have a problem with it. They just want to have something in writing because there's a recorded easement there. So we have to record something else that says, oh, by the way, it's okay to have the, the monument in this easement.
So it's technically our property, but it's an easement we've granted to them.
It's our property, and there's an easement in favor of the livestock folks to drive.
I, I remember this ordinance very well, and I just want to clarify one small thing. It does say that it does have the council, just like you said, and the final artwork, while it would not be dictated by, but would be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. That is in the ordinance, and I, I just want to make sure they have an opportunity to see it.
No, that's fine.
Yeah.
And so right now, the, the folks that are behind it, they just want to get permission to, to do it, know the city's on board with it, then they can go raise the money. They've indicated it's going to be something similar to this, but it's not going to be this.
No.
It's going to be a little bit different, so...
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, and I think that's a great location for it if we can get all the easements worked out. So I'd say we put it on action.
Okay.
There wasn't a herd of sheep that went down through there. We're so good, weren't there?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure there was.
I mean, that would be my only, that would be my only thought, but if they're the ones that want to put it there, and they don't think it's going to disrupt them moving sheep through there, then that's on them, so...
Item number six. Consider resolution to include the Quichbaw Canyon Ranch brand on the outside of the warm-up barn at the Cross Hollows Event Center.
So as you guys know, uh, Jean Lepore has donated a substantial sum of money towards the warm-up barn. And she's a tremendously giving and generous soul, and has indicated she's willing to continue donating money towards that facility. Uh, she hasn't asked for this. Um, this is pushed by us more than her, I think. But that's her brand on the screen. That's what it looks like.
The whole square?
Yep, the whole thing. Quichbaw Canyon Ranch, the upside-down J dash backwards L, Jean and Joe Lepore. The idea is to take that brand, uh, hire a sign company to fabricate something that's the same size, scope as a Diamond Z arena that currently hangs there, and then take the Quichbaw Canyon Ranch and put it on the warm-up barn.
I guess my, I have two thoughts on this. Um, number one, uh, that's why I asked if that was the whole white square. I think the brand itself, the Quichbaw Canyon Ranch, everything, I'm just, it looks like a sign with the big square rather than being a brand, because you don't brand...
Brand is just the thing inside.
Yeah, the brand is just the J in there.
So I would say the artists do all of this stuff, not the block. Because then it looks like you just put a sign up on the building.
Upside-down J bar backwards L. I don't know what it's called.
I think there'd be individual lettering.
Yeah, okay, okay, good.
So, so, so Ken Nelson with Leisure Services, so if you look at the Diamond Z, it's not a sign, it's individual letters, right?
I just wanted to make sure that...
That's the sign that's on the stalls currently that she purchased, so we just had that as a rendering.
So it'll be just the brand then?
No, it'll have that.
It'll have all that on it, but it just won't have that white background.
It won't be a sign.
It'll be individual letters or painted or whatever.
It's going to look just like the Diamond Z, except that.
Then I, I guess my only other question, and this is a sensitive one. I just want to make sure. I do think it would be, I don't think there'd be a problem, but I think you do need to reach out to Mrs. Zafropoulos and just let her know that this is the intent.
We already crossed that.
Okay, there you go. Okay, perfect.
She's more than happy to do that, and I, I view it as Councilman Phillips, as it's the Cross Hollows arenas. People get hooked with Diamond Z, but that's the name of the barn.
You're right.
It's the Cross Hollows arenas, just like you have the Adams Theater or the Echo Theater.
Yeah, but it's the Beverly Center for the Arts.
Right? You have a major place. It's the Cross Hollows arenas, but if we put names on each thing, we have the Iron Rangers as the outdoors.
Yeah.
So they can all have an individual name.
Perfect.
So is this going, just one question. So is this going on the far...
It will go on the east, facing the road, so east side.
On the south side or the north side of the warm-up barn?
It'll be the, uh...
The south side or the east side?
It'll be on the east side, won't it? East, east side, because the, the north side, there isn't a north side anymore.
No, I meant the south side. So it's not on...
It's on the new addition.
It's not on the south.
South side.
It's not on the south of the new addition. It's on the east of the new addition.
Facing east, but it's on the south side of the warm-up barn, so right next to the Diamond Z.
Southeast.
Gotcha. Got it.
Yep.
Got it.
And we were going to use the exact replica of the Diamond Z with the, she likes red, so it has a blackout line with the red in. It'll look just the same.
There you go.
And, and Jean did give a significant donation.
Oh, no question. No question.
Yeah, she owns the place.
And will continue, I imagine.
And she's willing to continue to, uh, fund, so...
I think it's wonderful.
Okay, thanks.
I just, uh, is that a resolution?
Yep.
Oh, action.
Item number seven, consider specialized aviation service operation, SASO addendum for the Rite Wrench Aviation.
All right. Good evening, uh, City Council, City Staff, Tyler Glenn Airport Manager. Uh, so the first item on this agenda that I'm bringing forward to you is to, uh, sign an addendum is to uh, sign an addendum for the Rite Wrench Aviation Company to include flight instruction and aircraft rental to their current S A S O. Their first S A S O was signed, I believe, last year, um, the end of last year. I gotta get the exact date on this agreement. Um, and they've been performing aircraft maintenance services uh, on the airport and they've been doing a great job, great rapport. Um, their users or their customers have had nothing but good things to say. We've had great dealings with them and so they want to grow their company. Uh, this was presented, I believe, in their initial S A S O was their business plan and this included flight instruction and aircraft rental. And so they're looking to pursue that. They've already purchased an aircraft. They've uh, flown it in, already done their maintenance checks on it. Um, and their intention is to allow flight instructors to uh, instruct students out of that and then lease it out to whoever desires to lease it.
That's awesome. Yeah, I and the airport board talked about this quite a bit. I know they they scrutinizing looked at them pretty closely, but they were supportive. Correct, Councilman Phillips.
Well, they get scrutinized fairly well by the FAA to begin with, right? So.
Always, yes. I I think we're fine with this, aren't we?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Can we put this on consent?
That's something we can put on consent?
There you go. There's one.
Do it. All right.
Item number. Thank you. Sorry, Tyler, to hang you around all night.
No worries.
Got one more. At number eight, consider approval of twenty twenty-five master plan for the Cedar City Regional.
About three hundred and forty-two pages?
We will. Uh, Tyler Glenn Airport Manager. Uh, so this item is for our twenty twenty-five master plan. The last one was completed in twenty seventeen. I believe we started this process uh, in twenty twenty-one officially, um, grant in twenty twenty-two. And we have now reached the final uh, document for that. And so we're looking to adopt that uh, for the city. Um, so we have Jeremy McAllister here with um, Ardua Group Engineering. They're our uh, planning consultants for engineering. Um, and their group's done most of the work on it, so I'll let him take over for me.
Thank you for sitting through all of this, sir. Appreciate it.
You bet. Uh, Jeremy McAllister with Ardua Group Inc. Uh, appreciate Tyler giving me some time. Just wanted to touch on a couple of highlights uh, for the master plan pro- or, you know, throughout the master plan process. Like Tyler mentioned, um, we did one previously in twenty seventeen. Um, and, you know, in terms of purpose and need, uh, the regulatory requirements are to do those master plans every seven to ten years. If nothing happens at your airports, they want to see an updated plan every seven to ten years. You know, if you have things like a runway reconstruction, they like to see them sooner, you know, if you see if you have growth, which Cedar City Airport, of course, has seen, um, things like that factor into um, how frequently they they do the master plans. And so um, we started this master plan. Uh, the grant was actually in in twenty-two, so we started it in late uh, twenty-two. Um, it's about a, you know, we're now into year three. Um, they can take up to four years typically. Uh, I would say they're more in the eighteen-month to three-year range and this is um, compared to some of the other master plans I've worked on, pretty typical. It's been pretty pretty benign. Um, so anyway, this A L P, we did a lot of focus on hangar development, um, commercial terminal expansion and then air traffic control planning as well as runway requirements. The the project kicked off in in late twenty twenty-two. Um, part of the project in terms of public outreach efforts, you know, we had two different advisory committees. We had a technical advisory committee and also a community advisory committee made it up made up of uh, different representatives from, you know, onsite and in business within the the city and the county representing those committees. Over the course of the project, we had four meetings with the technical advisory committee, four meetings with that community advisory committee. Both a mix of online and in-person meetings. Uh, in addition to that, we had three in-person uh, public open houses for the public to to come, you know, during various stages of that master plan, uh, to to get information and also be able to provide input into the plan. The project was overseen by our Denver Airport District Office or A D O, um, which is uh, the the Denver office is um, in in uh, is over the Utah, Colorado and Wyoming region. Um, so they've been involved all along the way. They have provided guidance along the way and have reviewed um, each document of the master plan as well as the airport layout plan. The airport layout plan is is actually, um, I I brought a copy of that, is um, not three hundred pages, thankfully. This is only uh, seventeen pages, but actually the the plan of what you can expect um, to see over the next ten to twenty years. I probably phrase that poorly. Um, this this plan accommodates the the anticipated demand over the next twenty years. It doesn't mean that everything that's on the plan will happen, um, but it gives the airport the flexibility to ex, you know, to allow those things to happen. And I say that uh, as as a for example, we do show a runway extension within the next twenty-year plan, but that doesn't mean that the city is obligated to do a runway extension. It just means that that um, you you can't do something if it's not on the plan, but if it is on the plan, it doesn't mean that you have to do it. So we intentionally make them flexible, particularly for the hangar development area. We really uh, took a long look at making that flexible for, um, you have a a big diverse uh, range of needs, be it corporate hangers or small, you know, individual hangers. So, you know, we've we've got a a plan in place. And then like I mentioned before, there was a lot of emphasis on um, what we call threshold planning. As the airspace and the operations get busy, um, once it reaches a certain threshold, when does it make sense to engage in air traffic control and kind of take those next steps, including sighting where an air uh, air traffic control tower would go? So there's a lot of effort in the in the three hundred-page document detailing detailing those efforts and just what those thresholds or triggering points would be. So the A L P, uh, which is the airport layout plan, has has been reviewed um, through all of the lines of business within the FAA. Pending uh, the acceptance of the plan by uh, city, by the city and with the mayor's signature, uh, the ne- then the FAA at the Airport District Office in Denver will accept the plan and that that will close out the project. Questions for me on that?
That should be just a formality, right? Because they've already reviewed everything because as we've been waiting on for months for their review.
That's correct. That's absolutely correct.
Okay. I just had one question and maybe I mis- I, cause I looked through this thing. I didn't understand it all, but I looked through every bit of it. On one of the uh, short-term, and I think it was either mid or moderate term term um, cost analysis, it was like the middle one. It was like eighteen million dollars or twenty million. I can't remember what it was.
Okay.
It said master plan study. And if I misread that, it said a million dollars.
Yeah, so a a master plan study, um, the three hundred-page document, I I can't remember what our contract was for this, but it was, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
I I would say the the million dollars probably just had an earmark.
For a master plan?
We're doing a master plan in um, Reno, Nevada for one point two million right now, but that's because we're changing, overhauling um, most of that airport.
Wow. We're in the wrong business.
I I would say that that's a earmark and I I would be, given what we know is going on at this airport, I don't I don't see the justification for that much.
Okay, good.
But isn't this a master plan that we're getting?
Yes.
So what's the million-dollar master plan?
Like like I mentioned earlier, every seven to ten years, they want to see a revised plan. Um, so that's, you know.
Yeah, that's.
So that's just putting it in for the next one?
Yeah, yes, sir.
We should just put a plus or minus in front of that.
Let's put a minus in front of it.
Yeah, okay.
And again, these things we don't, well, we have to do the master plans every so many years, but what's in the master plan, we can do or cannot do. If it's not in the master plan, we can't do it.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Uh, it 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 does to a point. We have to justify it. So there needs to be justification and that's part of what the FAA reviews. They don't want a Field of Dreams. You know, uh, because they're not gonna fund or support that. Um, and so all of everything that's in the plan is justified and has been reviewed and approved. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your work. Thank you. Can we put this on consent?
Could you imagine a control tab?
Or no?
Uh, if it's a resolution, we'll pull it back off, but if you want us to try it out there, we'll take it there.
No, 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 I'm I'm fine. I mean.
Yeah, I don't know if it does or not. If we can put it on consent, we will.
Thank you very much. Would you check into that? Uh, Mayor, I would move that we adjourn this meeting and go into closed meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Grant, how is?